Mr. Given, Administration staff. Members of the public, gentlemen, Mr. Corvones for gentlemen in council this morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order at nine thirty. Is there any additions to the agenda? Mayor Ireland.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, not an addition, but a request to reorder the agenda. To move item six, business arising from minutes. We call after agenda four approval of minutes. And I will say that by doing so, I hope to raise. As arising from the minutes, an issue with respect to commercial use of public space. And with the consent of council. If the chair wishes to invite Mr. Corvones to address that would be appropriate time to do so.
Okay. Any other additions to the agenda? Counselor Demola.
I may have to leave at noon and I just wanted to address a topic of conversation. To actually know, I'm going to save it for the next council meeting.
Great, thank you. So everybody in favor of agenda then? As amended? All right. Approval of the minutes from April twelve committee of the whole. Is there any errors on machines? Seeing as none, can I have a number canceled for the minutes? Council hall, all in favor? Thank you, that's carried. And now we're going to go to business arising from minutes and I'm going to call on Mayor Ireland.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, yes, the the minutes of our last committee of the whole. Meeting April twelfth, there was an inquiry about the status of. The sidewalk seating or commercial use of public space by law that's in the minutes. I have this morning just signed the approved minutes from the special meeting of. March twenty ninth. So I have access to the actual motion that directed administration to apply to Parks Canada for discretionary use. Permit for commercial use of public space. Subject to some prescribed. Conditions and we have that now applications as we know have gone out to. Community for people to apply for. Use permits for this year and potentially for subsequent years, but there is some concern with respect to. At least one of the conditions, so I'd like to start by inviting Mr. Given. To perhaps confirm whether or not. Administration in its application. Apply for a restriction with respect to tents or otherwise. How we got to this situation? And then I would have a proposal to make as well.
Go ahead, Mr. Given.
Thanks very much Deputy Mayor, so administration did follow up immediately after the special council meetings to apply. For the discretionary use permit in accordance with the approved council motion. As Mayor Ireland mentioned, there were some specific prescribed conditions that were enumerated in the council motion. And you know about the timelines. Where the pedestrian extension should be, that they could be located on the sidewalk or in the parking lane. There's also specific reference to the possibility of jersey barriers. Then there was a catchall that for the twenty twenty two season, those which had been previously used in twenty twenty one be accepted. So administration applied for that, Mr. Don did that very quickly after the community meeting and had that in. That week that was returned to us largely in alignment with the requested conditions that council had directed us to submit the application. The issue that I think is likely to come today is with respect to tents. There were tents in use in twenty twenty one. I think parks would take the view that they were not explicitly approved for use last year. And administration did not specify the use of tents in the application to parks. So to be clear, administration didn't apply for tents to be approved use in the twenty twenty two year. And I'll just make a contrast with the possibility of the use of jersey barriers. We did have a specific sort of reference to that in our application. So administration, I think, took the literal motion that council made. And made sure that the application was in alignment with that. I think administration appreciates that there was discussion at the council table about tents. And the potential of, you know, controlling for seasonality variability of weather. But that was not explicitly included in our application of parks that they were.
Thank you, Mr. Given, Mayor.
Thank you for that, it draws attention to. The requirement for council to be. Quite expressed in its motion, so I understand the. The circumstances that got us to this point and given that and given that I. My interpretation of council's debate was that with respect to tents that. Tents would have been covered by the statement that installations which had been previously used in twenty twenty one. Be accepted in twenty twenty two on the assumption that at least some of those installations include tents. And so we use the word tents, but I my sense was that that's what was intended. Given that we're not there, I would. Make a motion at this time that committee direct administration. To reapply to Parks Canada or that's what I shouldn't say reapply. Committee direct administration to apply to Parks Canada for an amendment. To the discretionary use permit for commercial use of public space. To include the use of tents or freestanding canopies for the twenty twenty two season. Subject to the application of applicable building codes because at some point. We recognize that not all tents or canopies are. Are equal and I don't want to get into a realm where we have no jurisdiction. But clearly indicate that the use of tents was intended and simply to apply for amendment to. Discretionary use permit to make it clear that we're at least twenty twenty two. Tents or as I say freestanding canopies because I don't want to get into an issue of debating. Terminology we approved for twenty twenty two. That is my motion and. It would be unusual, of course, to allow a member of public to enter debate, but I think Mr. Corvones with the will of council and. Your discretion could be invited to address the topic.
Mr. Corvones.
Hello, counselors, mayor. Thank you for your time, I know it's unusual that we come here, but I think this issue is pressing up that that subject was warranted. Again, I'm going to try and save us a lot of time, I think my message was clear in the last debate about this, but I want to reiterate that. The importance of this issue of some sort of coverage protection on these patios is critical. Very critical to the implementation of this program whether it's short term or long term. And there's a lot of concern, I think, with the other businesses in the implementation of these even for the summer now with the short timeline. But knowing the adverse weather that we can have, again, we need to be able to make these functional. And I don't know if the agenda of Parks Canada is simply aesthetic or otherwise. But it seems that this one issue could lead to these this program being futile and not being able to be. Administered properly and then in the end possibly not adopted, maybe that is their goal. But for us as a town and we have these meetings seem to be. Moving forward with these patios and I need to know that council as a group is either for them or or not for them. And in that event, we need to make some sort of compromise, some sort of. We need to have an option for these patios to be covered. Now I recognize that there are logistical problems and legal impedances to what kind of structure should be out there. We all agree that in the long term, we can find an appropriate solution that is, you know, the best of of all of our needs. But again, it's a critical time for businesses like mine to move forward for this season. To be profitable and to maintain some sort of profitability so that we can survive as we come out of this pandemic, which. Don't believe we are out yet, so. My suggestion and my hope is that I can convince council to really and the administration, however that would work, to. To ask first kind of what their. Issue is with this with these canopies or coverage and how we can maintain some sort of. Some sort of coverage for these patios and the discussion open to to put something up that's agreeable to them. And obviously that meets the safety of our guests and our visitors for the year. The the canopies themselves, I think, speaking a little bit to this motion to ask parks for. Some sort of agreement whether they be the building codes or not. I myself did a lot of work with the local engineer to make sure that our patio and our canopy specifically. Were safety and made made as reasonably secure and within the framework of the. The guidelines of the province and and the the structure of the law. And he was very confident that we had built and bought the particular products that needed to be bought. Has spent quite a large sum of money on very high end tents or canopies. And made sure that due diligence was done. So, you know, in that event, I would like you to consider that as well when negotiating with bar standard that. Although building codes are generalized and they they cover a lot of different scenarios. I think that every particular case could could warrant a little bit of its own. Discussion and and if, you know, an overwhelming amount of due diligence is met and and the safety. Concerns can be mitigated, then I think that that should be allowed as well. But I just can't speak enough to how important these coverages are and I. I think that not allowing for something this year will be a detriment to the patios. We will not be able to staff them properly, obviously, we're having a hard time finding staff, giving them adequate hours and giving them enough. Guarantee that they can work is problematic enough with weather variances, we're not able to do that. Without some sort of guarantee that that space will be usable. And in the long term and the short term, you know, these fees that we will be paying should have some guarantees for. A a secure amount of usability in in any respect, so. I hope that gets my point across again, and I do appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Corvones, any questions from council, please, Corvones? Counselor Demola?
I'm not sure if I have any questions for you, I do appreciate your eloquence and and. Everything that you said is very well said and I appreciate that. I do have while we're here at the table and and I think a motion is on the table. I have a question for administration while we're here. Just on the enforcement of the regulations that were kind of being held by here, do you know at what level, sir, that? That's being enforced, is that at the local level or regional level or is that like federally being enforced? Locally here, who's putting the brakes on? Terminologies like tents and using the the regulations as restrictions for these implements?
Through the deputy mayor, so at this stage, to be clear, the municipality Jasper hasn't requested use of any kind of outdoor cover. Let's say as broad a category as possible, so I think the mayor's intention here is to be explicit in our request to parks. And then we'll see what they say, because they haven't actually said no, that we didn't actually ask them. So the second portion is that there is a commonly accepted definition under the national fire code. And building code around tents and structures, I don't have that at right now, but it's the same in every municipality number. Upridge and there are regulations around that and I think I heard Mr. Corvones started and said he's aware of those and been working with the engineer. There, so national building code and fire code apply in every municipality. And whether that's under provincial or federal certification, we're in parks Canada that is in charge of building code. With respect to. Or sort of commercially space, once the municipality receives its approval from Parks Canada for discretionary use permit. And we issue municipal permits for the use of commercial use of public space, then it's our responsibility to enforce our permit. And ensure that any applicant is following up with terms and conditions that we've put in. So we don't enforce national building code, if we remain aware that something does not apply to national building code by appropriate third. And we would be responsible for ensuring that that applicant met the conditions part of the safe. In force that the other convention that will help regulations and everything, so if the health inspector came by. And notify the municipality Jasper that operations non-approaching health regulations, we would draw, we would withdraw the. And that would be the same under contracts for national building code required. So if a appropriate body informed us, we would be obligated to withdraw. And that thus set we have health conditions that are not building code fractions or things for certain side.
Thank you, Mr. Given, go ahead, Counselor Demola.
Well, I'm just wondering for the the sake of council and our discussion here, is it, sorry, I think. Is it worthwhile even using the term tent in our asking, just maybe keep it to something non-specific like covers or canopies? Because we don't know what a definition of a tent is and if there are specifics in the national building code whatever it is. And it's a ten by, it's something bigger than a ten by ten structure with four posts on it. I think a tent in my mind has walls, so to me, I think we're asking for canopies. And the most used ones are the ten by ten varieties. I've been told that a tent is something bigger than that, so we don't have a definition and there's. Should we ask for what their definition of a tent is, so that we know, because there's people that have bought. But for last year's use of previous years that are ten by ten structures that are canopies, but. Are they tents or not, so if somebody goes, what's that, are they going to be held to a standard that we don't have a definition on? So that's where I'm kind of like, there's this very big gray area and I don't know exactly that we're going to be asking the right thing. We get something back and keep going and ask for amendments to get what we want, what is it that we want? So does it have to be that specific, I'm just throwing it out there for discussion.
Mr. Corvones?
You know, just my perspective on this and purely my opinion, but. You know, this is the second variety of tents that we purchased, the first variety didn't, they recited as not being. Structure or approved to. Wind load variant that that was acceptable to Park's Canada, so I went out and I spent another. Nine thousand dollars to buy the appropriate tents that met the. One hundred kilometer hour wind load that they requested. We had the engineers Craig from Edwell Engineering come do an assessment, cost me another four thousand dollars. We had every sort of measure taken to ensure that the the safety of the public and and concerns of Parks Canada. Were mitigated and hopefully would would meet the recommendations that they need. In the end, it all proved to be fairly futile, they did not want tents, they made it quite clear that regardless of all the work we had done. Their their objective was to just not have tents down town or canopies. So all I'm asking is for council to consider that again, if the safety concerns or the objectives needed are mitigated. So that we can. At least have confidence that we're not putting anybody in danger, public danger. That we can achieve, reach the objective of making these spaces usable, I think in the short term, at least this year and past years. We're achieving our goal of making these these spaces usable. Again, I have asked no one to fulfill this, I have done due diligence and worked myself, I have met their needs and I've been very cooperative with them. I'm asking council to consider that in the motions they go forward and decisions they go forward. That we do want a long term solution that's aesthetically pleasing, obviously safe as a priority and wrong corrective. But in the interim, I feel like I met those obligations head on and I've overcome them. I want to not to be judged fairly by you and by Parks Canada as well. Second thing I would say is that, you know, again, we don't have a lot of clarity as to what the objection is to this and I understand that. Every sort of situation in town needs to be evaluated properly for safety concerns first and foremost. But in in this case, you know, having met most of or all of their concerns and still being denied. I'm wondering what what their agenda is and I would like to know, I would like some clarity from them, what. Their goal is, if it is to just dissuade people from using them, if they're not usable or not. I would be more comfortable knowing if this was not allowed by our own pollution, by the town. On a vote or the council finding some. Reasonable reason we shouldn't have these coverings and know that we, you know, we had made that decision as a convenient. I'm not comfortable knowing that somebody arbitrarily in an office of our standard is making these decisions without. Any sort of. Say or 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 concern from citizens that are using them and the town itself is benefiting from it, so. Yeah, thanks, thanks, I just wanted to add that to Counselor Demola's.
Thank you, Counselor Demola. And the other counselors. And Mr. Given, I'm curious, when we made the motion at the special meeting, we had said that we would. Work for Parks Canada on the working group and was that put forward to them as yet?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, it was, we were scheduling that, then we also. Another issue we want to return to council with, my representative, Jasper.
Thank you for that. Counselor Demola.
Yeah, I don't need to drag this on, it's just because of it, it's just, it's really playing a game in my mind. I apologize, this is, I think, I think the first time I've heard about a hundred kilometer wind load. Our umbrellas help with the same standard, like, has anybody been told that, because we've been told that umbrellas are can be used.
I don't know, but I'm sure that if we talk to the engineer, I'm sure Craig has those. Grounders, that was that was brought to me by Craig at Engineering Company.
Well, it's, okay, thank you for that, through you Deputy Mayor, I just, for me, it's just, I don't want to be all of a sudden, people are going to start using umbrellas. And then they're going to be held to the standard that we don't know about, so I don't want to open up another can of warrants, but we're talking about coverage here. And that is appropriate for people dining outside and socializing outside, so. I understand, Mr. Corvones, are we going to be, do we, are we clear on what we're going to ask today?
And I saw Mayor Ireland's hand and.
I didn't.
I was and I am prepared to close the debate, but. I will wait until others have engaged if they choose, otherwise if there's nothing else, I'm happy to respond.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, I just want to thank you then for coming in today and I do support. I guess the new motion, I haven't even heard it yet, but I know I asked you this in the special meeting, but just for, just to clarify, maybe reiteration. How many days do you think you wouldn't have business if you weren't able to cover your patio? Like these are, do you keep track of those?
Nobody knows, we we live in a weather variable sort of situation all the time, but in the mountains especially. I think the point is, do we want to maximize the use of these spaces? And if that's the goal, and I've read in some of the the recommendations from Parks Canada, that is their goal for using public spaces is to maximize them and make them usable. Then this speaks directly to the usability of these spaces, I mean, without coverage of outdoor space, then you're at the whim of any sort of. Weather condition, whether it be too hot or too cold or too wet. Those canopies provide a very large measure of guarantee that you can use them. We've had people dining under very heavy rains the last two years with the. With the advice of Craig and his engineering team and the secure measures we've done to put them down, we've had. Excessive winds down the cannot and have not moved an inch, so we feel very comfortable that we've we've met those needs and kept people safe. But also made that space usable, anywhere under those canopies can be used in almost ninety percent, I would say, I don't have the direct. Analytics, but, you know, we use them every day that we we could, the only days that we didn't use them last year was when it reached over forty degrees. And that was simply for the safety of our staff, not because they were unusable.
Thank you for that, I do, in my opinion, think that the public canopy is a much safer way to go and I also think the jersey barriers are safer than the structures, but I think that's another conversation, but thank you for coming today.
Mayor Ireland?
Thank you Deputy Mayor, thank you for the debate then. Just for clarity and because Counselor Hall wasn't sure that she heard the motion, I will repeat the motion. And that is that committee direct administration to apply to Parks Canada. For an amendment to the discretionary discretionary use permit for commercial use of public space. To include the use of tents or freestanding canopies for the twenty twenty two season. Subject to applicable building code requirements. To answer some of the questions that have come up during the debate. I think it is important to use the word tents because the discretionary use permit that we now have. Uses that word, it says, with the exclusion of tents, so whatever tents are, Parks Canada has a sense of. What a tent means to them, so I think. We are obligated to make it clear that. We support the use of tents, at least for the twenty twenty two season. But I've also included freestanding canopies, which I think is a valid descriptor of what these things are, but just to be to be clear, and I've included. Subject to applicable building code requirements, because I do recognize that. As we would be had the jurisdiction, parks is subject to. The parameters imposed by law and that includes building code requirements and. Members shares me correctly, it was about fifteen years ago after the big valley jamboree where a windstorm brought down canopies with tents. And people died, but the building code was changed to increase a a level of of public safety and so. Mr. Corvones is absolutely right, if the public safety concerns can be mitigated and the the code indicates how that might be. And sure, tents tents are fine from our perspective and I agree with this. Argument as we presented at our special meeting and again today, that functionality of these spaces is is a critical concern. But secondary to to say. At this point, I am not convinced that there is utility in seeking clarity of the objection from Parks Canada. It seems to me that we are at a position where. Though perhaps somewhat surprising to some of us, there. There is perhaps a misunderstanding of what council wanted, so I think we just clearly say, oh, you didn't know that we wanted tents? Well, we really do want tents, can you please amend the discretionary use permit to include tents or freestanding canopies? We need to challenge at this stage why they would object, if they do object, then we know we have different issue. Part of Parks Canada says, okay, we didn't really realize that tents were that important. And we deal with the issue, then it's done and then return as Deputy Mayor. Telegraphing into the working group to figure out the rules for such a point of interest. But for now, I am hopeful at least that the motion. Covers the basics, it includes tents or freestanding canopies, it includes reference to applicable building codes and Mr. Corvones says. Personal knowledge of what's involved in that, and this has an engineer look at this and it can be made or it's. and it can be made, or this configuration can be made to, to meet the requirements. So that is the motion. I am in support. I find it somewhat awkward that we are back here. But I will take responsibility in large measure because I certainly helped draft the previous motion, and it was silent as to tents. I didn't anticipate that it would lead to this sort of an issue. And I will take greater care in future to wordsmith motions and what triangle we hold. But for the time being, I am hopeful that this motion makes our position abundantly clear and that Parks Canada will simply respond in a positive way. We can all move forward.
Before I call the motion, Mr. Given, do you have anything within that motion that we may need to move forward?
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Kellerman. Yes, I believe the administration has a belief that this is at least specific, that administration.
Thank you. I'm going to call the motion on a favor. That motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Corvallis. We are kind today.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Mr. Given, Department of Sports, for your financial updates.
Yes, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Kellerman. So you'll notice that Ms. Mallon Schreit is not here today. She's actually away on, so, training. Her area on budgeting, finance, and party-based budgeting. So she's, she's blowing up on the specifics of this that will enable support our budgeting work forward. I think that we need here to present the financial statements. And so we have two sets of financial statements for you. Now, just let me know that our auditors will be here next week. I believe present the year-end audited financial statements. So these are the 2021 documents, which is, starts the report. Our un-audited financial statements, and they're presented to the council in a format we used to from our budget. You'll see in the first page that we are reflecting a predicted small surplus of approximately $71,000 on total revenues of $27 million for the year and expenditures of, again, approximately $71,000. So, I'm drawing a line there. Again, this will look slightly different than the audit. In the audits, we'll see that that year-end result will include depreciation. And so sort of skews it from what our actual results were because the auditors have, we have. I believe that's an issue in this, how much I could bring up the auditors to ensure that, that our audited financial statements we post are more easily read and understood, because it's common practice in industry or for a lot of people to have the depreciation expense of $200,000, which is essentially a paper exercise that provides their assets or increasing value over time. But in terms of our financial results, approximately $71,000 is good. Moving into the council, 2021 operating budgets. Just a note during the budget discussions for 2021, council directed registration transfer $40,000 into reserves. So other than council operating budget, in reserve, there was an expectation that due to COVID, travel had declined. We did have some openings, although the reserves started to stop. But we did want to acknowledge that there was a need to transfer in from reserves. So there's a $40,000 transfer to reserves directed by council and see if all revenues. There's a $21,000 transfer in to reserves, sorry, in from reserves. I'll set that as a best of the matter. And then you'll also see that the transfer reserves here to reflect the users' work, company, account numbers. So it was next step. As a capital reporting, I won't go through the list rather than just cover the high level. But 2021, you're saw significant understanding of capital, which is that, and this council saw it in budget discussions that was carried forward. That's sort of up in here at the end. There is one area that Ms. Mallon Schreit wanted me to highlight, and that was with respect to the parcel servicing. So causing and slash parcel development, and this is the parcel GHC. See, there's significant variances in those areas. That's really a reflection of the project between two years. That project is on target and it's likely to have an under budgeted amount. We'll close up that project for the spring and model model. So in spite of how it's represented here, it's not overspent by those. Then the next document is a reflection of the transfers to and from reserves. As opposed to those, we have some technical to do on our reserves, including creating a policy and ensuring that our reserves are, would reflect what public would commonly understand as a reserve. As council knows, we have transfers in within the year and transfers out. But I think the number of interest to council is really the beginning and balance, which are on each 16th package. Beginning balance of the sort of 2021 was $5 million in reserves. And end of the year, that increased just, just over $7 million. In particular, actually, the number above, council slightly interested with COVID relief reserve, which is a flexible funding source. You know, take a breath and pause there. Deputy Mayor Kellerman, if there are any questions on that second.
Any questions from Mr. Given? Information that you received so far? Counselor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Kellerman, through you, Mr. Given. The surplus of the $71,000 was forecasted. At the end of the year, where does that end up being applied to?
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Kellerman. At the year ends, there's been requested motion of council to transfer that surplus into reserves. Maybe not the future of the question, but I'm not sure exactly which one this council should recommend. How would be reflected direction of the council?
Mayor.
I have a number of questions, but just from that, I, I read it opposite, I think, to Counselor Mallon. I saw $71,000 in deficit. Sorry. Don't know where that's going to get transferred. It's going to have to be covered.
Your worship, just, just to be clear, and again, I believe it is a surplus. Let's see, we had $27,600,000 revenues and expenditures of $27,565. So our expenditures are less than our revenues, slightly less than our revenues, which equals $71,000. So we spent slightly less than.
Well, I read the brackets. Brackets indicate deficit. So, anyway, that is.
The, sorry, your worship. So the column of year-to-date 2021 shows sort of the sum. The column far right, which is the variance. So we were off from our budget. Unhere our budget, $71,000, which means that we have a surplus in our year.
I got it.
I, I don't understand how I can be so confused after so many years. But we have a line that says, total net surplus in brackets, deficit, indicating that if it was in brackets, it must be a deficit. The number that I read on our side, oh, the variance is, is $71,000. That's a deficit. That is the difference between total revenues, which were, the variance was 472 and the total expenditures were 543, which accounts for variance. It looks to me like we, we varied in our expenditures more than we varied in our revenue, leaving us with a deficit. But I, I, I will welcome the opportunity to speak with Mrs. Mallon Schreit about that. But on the same topic, if I may, Deputy Mayor, on that same page, I was, I was struck by the variance in culture and recreation, both in revenue and expenses, expenditures, which were exceptionally close within a couple thousand dollars. And I, I just wonder what we might interpret from that, at least in terms of, of that department. So we had budgeted some amount, it obviously came in a lot different, 40% different roughly than what we had anticipated. The, the effect on expenditures was roughly the same amount but a different proportion. Does that tell us something about our spending patterns? And can somebody educate you further about what we can learn from, from that? And again, not, not necessarily, but just an observation that I drew from the records provided.
Mr. Given?
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Kellerman. So Ms. Mallon Schreit may be able to speak more of the specifics of what made up those numbers. But the mayor's observation is the interpretation offered is that council should have confidence in their management and their administration because as our revenues were not increasing levels that we predicted, they might have started the year. But I mean, that's how much will ever be opened and how much revenue will we get from recreation? When it is, had it been here, that our revenues were not going to meet our expectations, we were managing team and the operation culture, ensured that our expenses were also matching the level of our, rather continuing to spend, even if the revenue wasn't. So there was the budgets, the additions seem to be made, administration detected revenue. Revenue wasn't materializing, so administration managed the operation to ensure that our expenses were aligned with the actual source secret. So that would be the interpretation that offered. Ms. Mallon Schreit, I'll speak to more of the detail of what the council wishes. But really, I think that that is a credit to the staff that are here at the same, what, not being seen on business of double.
Thank you for that, Mr. Given, and thank you, Stephanie, and Shays for the management. All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Kellerman. I had one for general questions. Looking at page 16 of our electronic agenda, which is the second last slide in this report. Page 16 or 75, 65, it has the, the end balance of reserves. And so at the end of December 2021, we had approximately $7 million in reserves, up from above $5.5 million the previous year. Can you advise, Mr. Given, whether increasing reserves or the level of reserves has any impact on any funding that we might receive, on any grants we might receive, or on the calculation of the debt?
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Kellerman. I worship. To my knowledge, no one does not have the amount of revenue received from grants, nor does it have, with respect to grants, vast majority provincial federal grants, either population based or reflective of a calculation of some metric like population or lean dollars of road and the grants. So the federal gas tax, for example, is really just a reflection of the population. You get so many dollars per person. So unless there are other grants that, that sort of, you know, there are none that I'm aware of that are reserved. That you, with respect to our debt capacity, the debt capacity is calculated based on our revenues. So as the municipal revenues increase and more things decrease, so will our debt capacity. There's not a reflection of the municipality reserves or, or certain reserve balances. The other thing that I want to, reserves as council noted in budget discussion, our annual budget process, our capital fund includes the significant use of resources, which really isn't in an L. And so, well, here, here, in the year, there is $7 million sitting in reserves, council, there's also significant allocation of reserves, you know, capital plan. So just to draw counsel's attention to that, and again, I think this is a question that I want to make sure that we do, that we align the way we present our reserves and policies that we have around reserves more with the way that an individual understand. This is a, that number is a combination of reserves that are held for use at some future time. Maybe there's a number of, and reserves that are held in a holding cap for a small period of time to be used. So we're not sitting on a, any council has already allocated significantly down to that $7 million.
Wait, that is true. Questions? Sounds phenomenal.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Kellerman. I, I want to, if I may, through you, just to ensure in my own mind, my own mind, that capital that was not spent in 2021, it appears in capital 2022. And this would have been presented to us during the budgeting process. So there's nothing new in there. This is all that had been planned in the five-year projections. So we're, we're looking basically at just a carryover due to timing things not being spent.
Deputy Mayor Kellerman, yes, that's exactly correct. And so council remember that in the budget, there are specific values that were identified as, as capital carryover requests. And as part of our practice and policy, administration identifies those and seeks explosive rule to council carry forward. So you'll see, maybe just sliding forward a little bit into the following pages of the document, you'll see very early, you know, representation of where our capital is. And you consider our capital budget for 2022 is just over $26 million. So that can be contrasted with our capital budget for 2021, 2018. So you can see that the total capital budget has increased significantly. And that's just part of their question, those carry forward items. Administration's focus on this year is completion of some capture projects. And as council, we discussed in short, we also have been carrying significant capital, which is really a preemptive certification. And we guys plan that both those projects be able to, to a significant extent, on both those. So there's a single security requirement.
Counselor DeMola?
Thank you. I'm not sure if this is on a similar, in a similar regard. It's just because we have operation and, and the capital reporting today. I had a resident reach out to me and I was fumbling with an explanation. And sorry, thank you for allowing me to speak differently. And so through you to, to Mr. Given, just to help me provide some clarity because of the, the recent billing cycle that's gone up through utilities. There was, there was a question on, you know, the capital here where, you know, primarily is funded through utilities when it comes to water and wastewater. We have, for an example, the wastewater treatment plant annual capital requirement. So right now, the, the new, I know this is 2021, but the new notices that went out have a, have the breakdown, the three C breakdown that we've talked about for a while. And a lot of that capital is, is in there. Now, would have we, would we have seen some relief on the tax side because of that movement? Or is the primary spike in, in capital requirements mainly due to us not funding that area sufficiently in the past? Is that, is that a clear question?
Go ahead, Mr. Given.
Yes, Deputy Mayor Kellerman, yes, that's a clear question. So the decision that council made to approve the CCC model or having explicit capital charges as part of the utility billing is a reflection of strategy to get up to the required annual expenditure on improving our water and water systems. Council will remember that there is a five-year phasing strategy to get up to annually reflecting spending approximately $6 million. In the past. In the past, uh, council has approved, uh, capital for water and wastewater. Uh, there's not regularly being at that, that level. And in many cases, it has been funded by debt supplies, by borrow, sorry, by debt. So in the past, we've been borrowing on an annual basis. You see that reflected in the, uh, in the capital plan. Um, and you can see that in our borrowing by less than this process that there are. Structure of the capital charge is that more of those annual capital requirements will be applied annual revenues. Rather than, uh, taking on debt, this table by property taxpayers. So more directly includes the system and the contribution to it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, let me clarify just, so, um, in the past, the debt financing was, or, uh, the payments for that, that debt financing was coming through tax office. That's good. I appreciate that and, um, able to answer questions.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller. I mean, just through to that, so am I saying that the money that comes in, you know, to receive the capital was straight to reserves? Is that?
How it is?
Yes.
Just on that though, but if we're trying to remain one million per year for our, um, capital expenses within the year, will it be in and out as well? As a portion of that, although for twenty years down the road and we have to, yes.
That's additional work. I think there is room to, to room on our CCC grade model, uh, to make made a good step in ensuring that there's transparency, that we are collecting money from users, this will be investment system. I think that administration present options to council, we need more transparency about what portions that are used for current projects. What portions may be for future, uh, major repair or replacement of, uh, of our system. It would not be uncommon to have a list of projects as capital cost was adopted by council policy. And it was there for the whole of seeing and then. So again, I think refinement that we can bring to that approach. Um, and I know council has already asked for review of this secret model.
So currently, Mr. Given, we, in the twenty twenty-one capital, some moved over, but, um, the utility repairs and that would be true to tax capital. Whereas going forward, will be true user fees. And we should see, not see that within our capital budget that will come on the tax recognition for twenty twenty-three.
Deputy Mayor Keller, I mean, you'll see more in the future. You will see, uh, the capital charge reflect as a funding source. Uh, and so one of the main sources we, of course, give grants. Uh, we choose to use some capital, actually this, uh, as you'll see reflected in the plan. You know, the, I was just trying to do some sums, uh, but just one section of the water. So we have, you know, water and wastewater systems, um, just one of those for two is up over five million dollars. Uh, expenditure area, um, that's required for, we are not collecting that true capital charge today. Uh, and so I think that there will continue to be a split of investment in that system from local sources, grants, property taxes, and money for capital charge.
Thank you for that explanation. Any other questions?
Thank you. If I might, um, return to a previous question, which we're able to articulate in a sensible way, I suppose. Um, the, the question was about the impact of reserves on potential funding of grants. And although I appreciate, um, the thorough answer and the question that even though there are any reserves, it's not that it's unspoken for. Um, but I was thinking in, in more general terms, which I unfortunately didn't make clear. But I'm wondering whether we have ever had any sense that accumulating reserves works against us in any fashion. And I think of several years ago, when public school boards in particular, um, were led to the conclusion that those who were prudent and had reserves were punished and those who were less prudent and had no reserves were rewarded with additional funding. Um, and it, it just occurs to me that as we grow reserves, whether they're still before or not. There may be some risk that our prudence, um, works against us in the sense that government find reason not to provide funding or grant funding uh, or other funding, um, on the basis that, uh, you guys are well looked after with reserves. We will instead help those who have been less prudent. And that was the, the nature of, of my question, whether, whether we have ever experienced any sense of that in our applications for funding the various levels of cover.
Mr. Given, go ahead.
Deputy Mayor Keller, I mean, no, we haven't, uh, to this stage. Um, and I'll say that, uh, it's worship, it's worship's observation is correct, and it's not just for, for school boards. That certainly has happened with municipalities, there are a number of municipalities, general municipalities, that there's, and reserves, uh, in excess of uh, hundred percent of their annual operating budget. So you can imagine being able to run a municipality for an entire year of reserves. Um, there are some municipalities that are in that situation, reserves of one hundred plus. Um, we are obviously not in that situation. Even if all of our research were counted as savings, uh, there would not be enough operating. Third of the year. Um, so, uh, that has happened in this province where the provincial government has imposed upon municipalities with for the points, uh, secretly were excessive reserves. That has not come up in municipal applications that Jasper has submitted, um, nor do I think there is any particular risk of uh, given, uh, our relative limited, uh, reserve balance compared to.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller. I mean, I, I would like to ask Mr. Given, just to confirm something for council. Um, I refer to page twenty and the wastewater reserves. Where we have one point four, one eight, um, plan. And without having to look it up, I went back to January. And we approved five hundred fifty-five thousand dollars for the two necessary pieces of upgrades, I guess, the centrifuge and the Oliver system. So one set is expended at the end of the year when that actually arrives. That is where that's going to show up, correct?
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you. Sorry to intervene. Just a, a closing question, um, and perhaps one that we could just discuss with Mrs. Mallon. I have a recollection of, of receiving reports similar to this, um, but they had an additional, um, line to the left. So if we take the, the starting side on, on page seven of our agenda. Um, there's the year-to-date budget, there's variance, and then a recollection is that there was another line that was the percentage of variance. And it just made, I found, really easy, um, to see the relative instability or instability of our various departments. And there might be a perfectly good reason why it's not included, but perhaps you could ask that. It's certainly something that I found to be very useful in comparing documents.
Absolutely worship through, uh, Deputy Mayor Keller. Um, administration wants, uh, this knowledge has been chomping at the back into a regular cycle of reporting quarterly to council. Through COVID, there were some adjustments being made as all businesses were, well, personally, it's, uh, this regular cycle of reporting. It's sort of fallen by the wayside. Uh, now things that stabilize and normalize that it came to expectations is that we will be coming back council regularly with its reports. And we can certainly ensure we're adjusting and presenting in a way that the council is seeing.
And also circulated, uh, the first two months of this year. So any questions on that, Mr. Given? I'm sorry, Counselor Demolde.
Oh, no, that's fine. I just, uh, while we're here, we have a discussion on, uh, water and wastewater. I, I believe that, uh, since the notices went out, we've been getting a lot of feedback from the community and I personally have. And, uh, I think that, you know, we've had some, uh, correspondence that's come in to mayor and council and some of us individually. I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity for council. Um, you know, we're committed to review this process, um, you know, after the final ballot cycle this year and uh, see where, you know, where we had some successes and failures. I'm just wondering if we, if we could collaborate our, uh, correspondence and finding out where we can improve our communication, because I, I thought we did a really good job in the beginning. We knew that there is going to be some, some, uh, feedback. Uh, when the notices went out, but I just, I wonder if there's an opportunity to assess where the gaps are and, and maybe improve, you know, going forward, because there's a lot of, I believe, miscommunication in the community right now. And, uh, some people running with it. And, and I think that, um, you know, we had a really good intent and I thought we, uh, were doing the best to communicate with the information and even with the notices going out and the numerous amount discussions at council meetings, it's, it's still to get out to an appropriate level. So I'm just, I'm putting that on the table for, for thought right now. I'm not too really direct right now, but just give an opportunity. Thank you.
I have a question, we'll need to see one, just regarding the debt limit. So our debt limit is twenty-five, just under twenty-six million, which means you can borrow up to that amount. That's correct.
That is correct. After, but we have first count for any debt that we currently have on both. So that's the, uh, remaining debt limit is fifteen.
Okay. And so the service on that limit, that's my question. Is that just he services, they, he's interest that kind of stuff? Or what exactly does that mean?
Sure. So, uh, for, uh, council hall through Deputy Mayor Keller, I mean, the province calculates the municipal debt limits in two years or factors. Your total absolute debt, like how much more, how large a mortgage needs to be. How, and, and then the second measure is how much can you afford to pay each month? Obviously, they're, they're direct linked. Uh, the province really does check and, you know, uses both as a, a checkpoint. Uh, so rather than just sort of relying on people, how much house can you afford, uh, your total debt capacity? Also, how much can you afford based on your current revenues to a uh, and, and again, it's not a definite case, but, uh, this, they the way to interpret these numbers here will be that the municipality of Jasper can afford to have annual servicing costs uh, on debt, uh, so we could, under initial rules, uh, be allowed to have annual payments on our mortgages of up to four point two million dollars. We are currently paying about three million dollars in our, what, what mortgage payments. And that means that we have about two point nine million dollars that we could capacity like. And, and again, I'm using mortgage service as a placeholder just, uh, for, for that debt that we have. And these are essentially the payments on that.
No other questions? Uh, Counselor Demolde?
Yeah, uh, just recently, again, uh, because of this information here, um, there was some sentiment uh, in the community that council had abandoned, uh, the skate park. Um, I just wanted to point out that in capital, that we have, uh, there's nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars still, uh, marked for a skate park grounds. Um, my question, uh, through you, Counselor Keller, I mean, um, if there was an initiative to, to go forward with that, uh, Mr. Given, how would that, that be funded and you know, just to help my memory, has, has money been allocated for that, that will be borrowing for?
Thanks very much, uh, Deputy Mayor Keller. So, yes, uh, for, for council and community knowledge, these numbers reflect the total cost of the project. They do not reflect funding breakdown of sources of funding. For example, uh, in skate parks specifically, uh, council has previously budgeted three hundred thousand dollars of municipal contribution towards that project. So of the nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars that that budget is, is forecasted cost. There is currently within the municipal budget, a reflection of three hundred thousand dollars. And balance of that, I said a thousand dollars, six hundred, seven thousand dollars training would come from user group.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that question.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller. Yeah, I don't have a question for administration or Mr. Given, but I, I did want to respond to Counselor Demolde and the issue of utility billings and just one small matter. My reflection is that we approved the new bylaw with the CCC model. We recognize that there would be some growing pains. I think we set ourselves a target of four billing cycles soon to return to the matter in September rather than at the end of the year. And, um, certainly the way things are rolling out, um, there might be some arguments to be made to accelerate that review. But I also think that it is not necessarily a communications issue. Staff to, to leave here feeling that, that somehow it, it's, it's a lack of communications. The bills speak for themselves and people are, are concerned about, um, what it's costing them. I think we have to sort out what the, the real differences are. So I think we have to accumulate um, some information and then I'll finally communicate that. I just don't want, um, anybody to leave this meeting thinking that that somehow it's a, it's a communications misstep and that perhaps not intended, but I, I want to make sure that that is not what leaves this room.
And I agree with Ireland. And the other thing too, I'm, I'm actually myself quite interested to see the next rotation of going because a lot of people are using leaders right now. And, um, I'm interested to see when that's taken off, how the buildings actually are, because a lot of people will receive credits for the leaders that have been on during, uh, January, February. So I think for the true buildings, we're really not to the next cycle. So I think that will be really interesting when we start rebuilding again.
Yeah, good. And you know what? I, I appreciate that. And, uh, I also appreciate, uh, Mayor Ireland's, uh, comments. And, you know, I, I'm just trying to, my, in my way, compliment, uh, our staff and, and the communication that we were doing. And I, I felt that, you know, maybe some of it fell on us. So I, I didn't want anyone to, to go with me. Uh, like I was condemning our process or, you know, what we've done. So, um, having said that, I think that um, yeah, we still have opportunities to improve every day. And I think, you know, through further billing cycles after the next one, we'll see where we are in our market. We're achieving our mark. Uh, you know, and I don't want to reach out to, to Mr. Given at this point, but we'll have a better, we'll have a little bit of a litmus on um, where our financials are with our income after these, these, uh, these cycles go through. And then if we're way ahead of the century, which I don't think we, we are, uh, that we can, we can assess upon the fly.
So next week, Mr. Given, we will have our auditors, um, through the council.
Yes, Deputy Mayor Keller, I mean, council, you'll be relieved to know that the page of the auditors. Um, and the, you'll have this knowledge here, who are both more qualified. We give all the full answers in the budget and, and the financial.
Thank you. I think you did a great job today answering all our questions. And Mr. Given, can you give us motion tips that um, the, um, what are the reports?
Prior to making the motion, um, I think it would be important that we review page eighteen. Um, because we have a, we have a deficit of the nine hundred seventy-four. But the variance doesn't equal the deficit. And if there is an explanation for that, I, I do see that there is a bit of a, what could be an error in the operations revenue variance, which is causing this not to match. Because the variance from actual to budget should be the same if we have a zero for, for budget. But prior to making a motion to accept these, I would suggest we may want to have them reviewed to ensure that I'm not interpreting this incorrectly.
Deputy Mayor Calerampe, so I can't speak to that detail, but that's one that I would have to refer to this knowledge. As possible preparation, it was more precise or efficient. But I think the thing that I would, you know, in the 2022 operating budget, we're sold early in the year. Presentation our side, our presentation, the things that would bring council attention would be that we do not expect any year deficit of 900 dollars. The municipality has a real low, a real seasonality to its revenue. The vast majority of our revenue coming in at our tax filing deadline. So we expect that catch up. It's not a check to report also that our, our investment income is under budget, which I don't think surprises volatility part there. And expenses are, so we're about nine percent of our predicted annual revenue at this stage and about 12% of our annual expenses. So I think, you know, expense start early in the year as we started our capital planning, location and our revenues catching up here. I will take back that question, all of the difference in the comparisons area and the variance between the year-to-date reported number of 974 and the variance calculation. I'm not sure I, I would note that they were also different in the 2021 year. It's probably very, very close. There's a small difference there. So that this knowledge as the opportunity to.
Counselor, are you making that motion?
I will make that motion. Thank you.
I would understand that motion to be that committee received the quarterly financial report has information. Might I propose a suspended amendment? And that council request an explanation of the non-matching numbers on page 18 and the corrections to the report if necessary.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland.
Happy to accept that.
Excellent. All in favor of this motion? All right. Thank you to Mr. Given and Mrs. Calerampe for putting this report together. It is now 11:45, so I'm going to call it recess till 10:50. Welcome back. Welcome back, everybody. I'll call the meeting back to order at 10:52. And we have completed business arising. Is there any other business arising from the minutes? Then I'm going to go on to seven panel, Activity Center renovation and 102, Mr. Given.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Calerampe. I am joined today obviously by our Director of Community Development, Christopher Reed, who is on Zoom, as well as members of the project team from WSP, Christopher Timmons. Our project manager is there. And we have Andrew Alfonso and Andrew Tankard from GEC, who are our architectural consultants on the project, leading the design team. In your package, you will see the committee report, which I actually will come back to after we go through the presentation that's contained in your report. And so the design team is here to support and supplement the discussion, to be able to answer questions for council and to correct anything that I get wrong. So design team, by all means, if there's something that I mischaracterize, feel free to chime in. But I feel well supported that they're all there. So council will go into the presentation. And I don't know if our recording secretary can bring up the presentation for members of the public so that they can see the sections that we're going through as we proceed. So that starts on page 26 of your council package is the presentation. And the first section is really related to the project schedule. We started up with the GEC team late 2021, December 17. And you'll see the work that has happened today, phase 1B. Sorry, phase 1A. Now we're now into phase 1B, towards the end of that, where we have refined the scope based on direction from committee. We have been able to develop class four cost estimates, and I'll speak to that in a second. Sorry, Deputy Mayor Connor.
Just, just on a, on a point of privilege, I think staff is working to get this on screen. And I think in fairness to any members of the public who might be watching, it would be helpful to see the presentation as a part of it. So I wonder if we might just give staff a couple moments to get this up. And I couldn't just keep talking if we don't want dead airspace.
They don't mean doing that.
Although I do recognize an announcer on the screen who knows how to spill, how to fill dead airspace.
Thank you, your worship through Deputy Mayor Calerampe. I could share my screen if that is an option that works on the admin side. I'm not sure because I'm not in the room, obviously, with you, but I'm making that offer.
Please go ahead, Mr. Reed, and share with them.
Did that work? Do you see the GEC? Okay.
Great. Thanks very much, Director Reed. Appreciate that. And maybe if you can just minimize the tab on the left-hand side that shows the panels and maximize along the right-hand side, that'll make easier for the public. Thanks for being able to do that. And then when you're able to find that section one of project schedule, I'll keep rolling from there. There you go. Thanks very much, Director. Appreciate that. And thanks, your worship, for flagging that so we can make sure the public can see this as well. So as I was referencing, this is the project schedule. And I just want to acknowledge that it was, that we've had the GEC team and our consultants actually really on board for a relatively short amount of time. I want to thank them for the amount of work that they've done in terms of investigating the facility. All the technical backend workings of the facility, validating what needs to be done, what can be done, giving us some options, and then now building a second presentation to council to refine that process. So after we conclude this phase 1B, we are towards the end of this at April 26th, where we're seeking council direction to finalize the scope. Getting that direction will allow the design team to move on to doing the detailed schematic design, which is what will allow us to get to construction drawings. At this stage, you'll see some designs in the package and some concepts. They're obviously not to a level of detail that would allow us to build. And we have not progressed to that level of detail that would allow us to build because there are still options and alternatives here. And so before we progress any further, we want to make sure that council gets their direction about what they wish is to build out further and to go to that next level of detail on. Section 2.1 is the cost estimate class comparison. And this is for council and the public's information, just in terms of a significant project of this scale. There is obviously some uncertainty with respect to costs. I think council is well familiar with this. Administration needs to make some kind of estimate of how much a project is going to cost. And we started out at the far left-hand side of the scale with sort of our budget estimate, which has a very wide, wide range of accuracy where a project could come in below or above. And as you progress through the project lifecycle, in terms of design and refining design, actually constructing the project and completing the project, obviously you narrow down to, to really understanding exactly what the project cost would be. So administration has made their initial estimates, and that's what council reviewed and approved in the budget. Today, we're at a class four cost estimate. And so you can see that there is still a fairly wide range of costs. And that's reflected with the fact that the schematic and detailed design has not yet been completed. Our cost would be refined as we went into that class three. It also reflects that we've not yet actually tendered the project to find out what the market would say that it would cost. And that's subject to variables such as inflation and materials cost and other things. But just so that council appreciates where we are in this process, we're still on that far left-hand side in the class four estimate, which is not the same as saying this is exactly what the project costs. Section 2.2, the following slide is really what will guide the rest of the presentation. The presentation is broken apart into three separate sections, discussing the project in three different categories. The first category is the required scope. These are portions of the project that need to be done and can be funded within the approved budget that's available in their existing council through capital. This is essentially what we have the money to do today. The second category, the council requested scope, are unfunded items. These are items that reflect the direction from committee previously, where committee directed administration, the team, to explore different design alternatives and options, and to come back to council with some estimation of what those things would cost to do. So those items are not currently funded. And to be explicit, would take an expansion of the budget in order to incorporate them. And the, the final category is future required scope. These are items that in the investigation of the facility, the project team identified as things that need to be done and that administration assessed could be done as independent projects, as parts of our regular lifecycle maintenance and asset management. So those are the things that you will see in future budgets. But really just a reflection of, well, there are things that are important and things that we would like to do. We cannot do them all within our current fiscal capacity. So they will have to be future years. So we will discuss each of these sections and highlight to you what criteria meant something went into which one. And then particularly with the council requested scope, I think that's where we'll have a fair bit of discussion about, you know, options that council may wish to consider that are largely focused on increasing the functionality of the facility. So go to the next page of 2.3 of the presentation, the funded scope. This shows essentially cost breakdown. There has been some question about what are the allowances or contingencies that are built in through the project. So I know council members and the community said, well, are you, are you reflecting the cost of building in Jasper, which we know is different, can be inflated over building into the sort of core areas of the province? You know, are you, are you leaving enough room in that for some of that variation? And you'll see here that we're carrying a proposed total construction cost of 6.6 million dollars. That's the hard construction cost of the facilities and proposing a $782,000 construction contingency. And then we also have a, an amount and allocation to reflect the increased costs required to phase the project, recognize that we can't just shut down the entire facility all at once and let it be a construction site for a year. We will have to continue to operate the facility in different parts. So there's a cost to that. We recognize that we need to make an allowance for escalation in terms of cost increases reflective of the changing environment and inflation. We also need to make an allowance for soft costs, fixtures, inspections, a small amount of overall project contingency, and also an allowance for hazardous materials to this facility. So there is that additional allowance of 2.7 million dollars to cover off all these other items. So the 10.16 is a total of all those things. And we have approximately 10.16 available within the approved capital budget. And so that's essentially, we can do all these things within the money that's in the budget of this group today. Next page gets into the details of what is included in that required scope. And the, I know the council has had this in advance. You may have questions about any of the individual portions. That's what the project team is here to be able to answer. That might be Andy Alfonso and Andrew Tankard from GEC. I will, I will not go through each individual line item, again, respecting the council had this in advance. The observation that I'll make for you on this category is that you will not see a significant number of items that are flagged with a red dot or an orange dot. So the red dots and the orange dots are, the red dots are building functional program improvements, where we're adding new function to the facility. You know, we're doing something new that we couldn't do before. You'll see that there are only a couple of items, the addition of a new storage room in the gymnastics area on the main floor, which is a functional improvement for the operation of the facility. We don't have a storage room there and stuff is essentially stored out in the open and is not as functional as we would like for, for the operation facility. The other item that falls into that category is in the aquatic center, which shows the renovation and relocation of existing universal change rooms, dressing room, and parking access. So this is, we don't currently have universal accessible change rooms. And so this would be a functional improvement. Those two items aside, there are no other items that really offer an expansion of the service or a major improvement in the function of the facilities. There are operational improvements is the other category, the addition of keyless entry on select exterior doors for the facility and the activity center and the arena. The addition of dehumidification within the arena. We don't currently have a dehumidification system there. There are upgrades proposed to the activity center emergency power system and the addition of the keyless entry on select exterior doors of the aquatic center. So keyless entry is an operational improvement. It doesn't really expand the things you can do with the facility, but the facility will operate more smoothly. You can see that the required scope items are really focused on building code and life safety deficiencies reflective of the changing code and the building's age, accessibility improvements, and simple lifecycle renewal and maintenance. The buildings are showing their age and need reinvestment. And so the major focus of the required scope items are on those three categories, building code, life safety deficiencies, accessibility improvements, and lifecycle renewal and maintenance. So we're not really talking about expanding or improving the level of service or adding new functions to the facilities in this category. I'll pause there and first ask Director Reed if there's anything that he wanted to provide council in terms of context around the required scope items.
Go ahead, Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Calerampe, and through to council. You know, CAO Given is doing a great job of summarizing. I will say that in the short time I've been here, this project has, of course, taken much time and much work for me and my team. And this summary, so far, Mr. Given is, is doing excellent work. And I don't really want to add anything. Sorry.
You don't need to apologize for not wanting to add anything. I know that there's more than enough deep said during the, during the presentation. So I just want to make sure that I didn't, didn't pass up that opportunity. I should, I should direct council attention to a few priority items within the required scope that were the focus of previous discussion and in fact were part of our application for funding of the program programs. Under the activity center, you'll see that about midway down the list is the addition of a 2,500 pound elevator. So this would allow full accessibility across all three floors. So from the basement to the main floor, the upstairs curving lounge would have accessibility. In order to have that elevator, it causes some reconfiguration of the curving like frame lounge. We would need to relocate some washrooms and the bar. So there's some associated items that will walk with that. But that is a, that is a improvement to the facility. It doesn't mean that we can offer new types of programming. It means that we can probably offer the same programming that we do for people with. It means that we can probably offer the same programming that we do, but people with mobility issues would be able to access it no matter what floor it's on. Which does give us the opportunity to host different types of events on the different, different floors because we feel it could be fully accessible. The other item is at the top of the activity center. There are west front entrance enhancements proposed so that west entrance by the childcare area and that sort of roof that goes over top is supposed to be improved. This all, this category also includes addressing a lot of the drainage issues that we've seen council know that we've seen drainage issues in daycare and other areas reflected often in the capital budget. This would address that as well as renovate the aesthetics of that area and provide some additional enhancements by essentially bumping out the interior space and demolishing that, that old. Again, we'll see that reflected in the layouts. The other item that I wanted to bring council attention to was the arena. The required scope includes a renovation of the existing arena dressing rooms below the cell bushes. So we will have some discussion about dressing rooms, significant discussion about dressing rooms included in the required scope. And I'll, I'll be a bit simplistic in this. The required scope includes painting them, you know, fixing them as they exist today and improving them, just simply doing lifecycle renovations. It does not include reconfiguration, improved accessibility or any substantial renovation. It's just basically saying, let's improve what we've got. So, and council's got other options, that's the next category. I'll move in then to the next category, the two point four. This is the council requested scope. This is really where we'll be asking council to make some decisions. Again, you can see that breakdown and the reflection of the contingencies as well as for construction contingency and the broader contingency around phasing escalation costs. In the total there, if we go into the next slide that starts to break that down. This is where we will have some discussion. I will rely on the team to sort of guide us through the alternatives and options when we get into the floor. Jump there right now. But I'll highlight here that you can see that the red and the blue dots appear in this section. These concepts really offer the opportunity to change, either change the way that facility operates, to enhance our programming or to to allow us to offer, yeah, substantially improved approaches to the public. So they could, there's really public facing improvements where you can see the list of items required scope were really back of house items. Under the arena, we have some alternatives that we'll need to discuss in a little bit of detail around dressing room expansion. So there are options to expand the dressing rooms within the existing footprint of the facility. So without sort of busting out any walls and making the arena larger, we could expand to add additional change rooms to the north side of the facility. And that is one of the alternatives that's below the line there. We can add a viewing lounge, which you also remember there was some discussion about. Administration has identified in consultation with the design team some alternatives. The first option that council saw at the last committee meeting was the concept of a viewing lounge on the east side of the arena, sort of adjacent to the curving ring lounge. Administration is, work of the design team presented that option, which is here and is not recommended. That is the sort of below the line, or says scopes listed were not included. That would be a two point four million dollar cost to do that above the existing sort of lobby area. Administration also identified an alternate option, which would be a second floor arena lounge to the west above new change rooms that would be to the west. So essentially where the parking lot is today, there's the garage, that exterior garage and a small parking area. What is in the recommended items out of the council request scope would be the addition of new change rooms. A one-story change room addition puts out the footprint of the building. And there's the potential for the second floor arena lounge above that, which you can see would be a lower cost than trying to build it over the existing footprint of the building. Within the activity center, administration is, the presentation includes the cost to convert one hand wall port into multi-purpose rooms in the basement on the main floor. Just under three hundred thousand dollars. That is the cost to relocate and reconfigure the senior center of the administration offices at just under six hundred thousand dollars. Small associated with the access door in the senior center, which wouldn't be required if we were doing the major renovation of that area. There's a smaller item with the conversion of the offices in the lobby. So those are immediately off the lobby where our legislative working group used to sit behind the ATM and that other offices there, so there's some of that. There is the full renovation of the basement washrooms in the facility, the conversion of the sauna, the currently non-functional sauna to a third universal washroom in the basement. And then as requested by council, the complete renovation of existing change rooms, including the women's dressing room. So in the first option in the required scope, we renovate just to create new universal change rooms, accessible change rooms and then update the area remains that's required as a result of that. And this option is a core renovation of the change rooms for all users of the facility. We will show you these again when we get to the floor designs. And I'll just sort of flag before we get there, just a couple steps away. For Andy and Andrew, if you could be prepared to sort of walk council through the floor layouts to help orient them to what parts of the project are there. Give you guys as much time as it takes me to go through the next slides so that you're prepared to be able to do that. The next section is the future required scope. So this is the category that is essentially the items that we have identified that need to be done. That administration has discussed in some detail and there are some trade-offs. And we've identified that there are things that could be done independently in the future rather than in the scope of this major project. These are the types of items that you would, should expect to see on the future capital finances specific lineups. And then you go over the next, you know, five to ten years. Again, you can see the section is really focused on lifecycle renewal maintenance and some operational improvements. But really again, not extensive focus on building functional improvements. Overall, administration isn't proposing either the required scope that we have money for today or in the future required scope to change the function of the building substantially. Kind of is what it is. There are some great opportunities to enhance its function for the public under the council required scope items. But this future required scope is really focused on continual reinvestment into that facility so that it continues to be able to provide the service that it does today. I'll give council just a small example of some of the discussion that happened behind the scenes with administration. There, in the future required scope, you will see, you will see items related to essentially the HVAC systems. See it here. Upgrades to the mechanical system, including air handling units, boilers, domestic products. So those need to be done. And at the same time, we also needed to make significant improvements to the electrical distribution systems within facilities. Both really significant projects and could easily eat up all of the available budget. Administration made a determination that the priority should be on the electrical components of the, of the buildings. And so that's what we see reflected in the required scope. And we would come to you at some point in the future recommending that we need to replace a hot water tank here or there or an HVAC system here or there in future capital discussions. So that's an example of the types of trade-offs where administration had to say, well, these are both important items. They all need to be done at some stage. Which ones should receive the major renovation now and which ones could we recommend to council at that future point?
Just on that, Mr. Given, but wouldn't the mechanical not be part of rent to maintenance? Shouldn't that be cost as we go along on our budgets over the year that that's coming up? It's like the lifetime that, you know, me?
Yeah, yes, that's exactly right, Deputy Mayor Keller and me. That's exactly what administration would propose, all the items in this section two point five is they will all be items that would, you know, have cost estimates in the budget. They would proceed as either, you know, we may plan to actually together to do a, you know, a more significant project in some future capital year. Or there may be small independent projects that we do. But this is essentially the, the list of future needs. And this is a reflection of, of asset management, identifying the things that need to be approved, making some judgment calls about what you can afford and ensuring that those things that you might not be able to afford today are addressed in a timely manner before they reach the end of the lifecycle, start to reach the critical layers. I'll pause there before we get into the supporting drawings and ask if there are any questions.
Any questions?
My questions kind of go around the drawing, so.
Yeah, I have a sense that everybody wants to get, okay, so what does this actually look like? So.
Just before you do go on, I, I am particularly interested in the terminology required in the requested scope and I understand the challenges there. In some cases, you overlap the colored dots to indicate that something could be, could fall under a number of categories. And I, I would just encourage a relook at this. With that in mind, I think there are a number of things that when we look at required versus discretionary and how we should spend our money, if I can use those terms. There are a number of considerations. So just looking at this by two point five, future required scope, sound systems, for example, is an operational improvement. But it seems to me that at least in the arena and the activity center, less so perhaps in the aquatic center. That's also a significant building functional component. If you invite people to the multipurpose hall and you can't hear the speaker, it's not a very functional space. And we can improve it greatly. So a red circle there seems to me to be appropriate. Similarly, in the arena, the sound system is, is critical for proper functioning of that. As I say, perhaps in the aquatic center, just for announcements, people have to get out of the pool, but I, I just encourage us to, to look at where there might be overlaps as we move along so that we can focus on making these facilities as functional as possible while at the same time dealing with required maintenance and other building requirements.
Go ahead, Mr. Given.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Keller and me. I think his worship is really hit on something here. The assignment of those, particularly the council request scope and some of the other items, you know, is really up to council to find what is required and what provides the value that we can wish to see for any expansion. So administration did our best and the consulting team did their best to identify where things were clearly, you know, a functional improvement or an expansion of the function. But there may be other things that council, you know, categorizes slightly differently. The way that I've been looking at this is really what is back of house and what is front of house? I mean, you could very easily have two categories. My, my thought for council to consider is what's the right balance between back of house required improvements so the facility can operate that public would never see? We could, with the shopping list that's here of the future required scope items, spend one hundred percent of the money that's currently in the budget and more on items that the public would probably never see. And I think it's up to council to decide what's the right balance. Because I would imagine there's public expectation that if you spend ten million dollars on a facility that they would pull this. But that is, that's why councils like to make those kind of judgments. Administration is trying to provide some objective analysis and categorization for council's consideration. Although we interpret something as being required more than administration have it in the public.
Thank you, Mr. Given. I'll save them all that.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller and me. Through you to, to Mr. Given. This has somewhat to do with me being on the environmental responsibility, community conversations. But something that I've kind of hung on to for a while because just, just through a little bit of corporate history, we purchased a heat recapture unit almost a decade ago. I think, and I don't believe it's ever been switched on. And I think that was because of some compromise that may or may have, something that may have, may or may not have compromised the system with a wall that went up and where the gymnastics center is. So I'm just wondering, within all these points, these bullets of replacing mechanical units and upgrading heating systems and exchangers and stuff, if that unit could be reused or reincorporated some more or has that had, has that been addressed yet within this scope?
Yeah, thanks, Councilor DeBoda. That item was specifically discussed by the project team, this was not true. And I believe Andy will have the answer to that about where it's reflected, which of the categories the, that he recovered, what is per status is. Andy?
Yeah, the, the heat recovery is, oh, I'm getting some background. The heat recovery recommissioning is captured in the required scope.
Okay, so the, council promoted your question. That is in the ten point six million dollars that we have included in the current budget. The recommissioning of that, that piece of equipment would happen in that, that base. That we can say the base sort of recommended scope budget. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so should we move to the drawings? That's, that's the fun part. Well, it does help orient people to, you know, sort of what we're talking about, the line items, really don't do that in quite the same way. So if we go to section two point six, you'll see the supporting drawings. We're going to start it up at a ten thousand foot level and then we'll sort of start to zoom in on specific points. But to orient you here, the blue areas are the new dressing rooms expansion. This reflects essentially that addition to the west where the parking lot and current garage sit. And this will, will get into the detail of exactly what that looks like. That's further on the presentation. This reflects approximately three point three million dollars in the council requested items. There is also in that blue area to the west would include the opportunity for that second if council wished to propose a lounge viewing area for the arena. Administration would recommend that it should be, could be there. That's sort of the cost of approximately one point seven million. The green area is the new lobby expansion to the west. That is included in the required scope items, so that's funded within the ten million dollars. There is an alternative for a second floor arena lounge on the east side. So remember I reflected there were options there. That sort of brown or orange area is not recommended and it would cost approximately two point four million dollars. So you can see that if we were going to add a viewing area to the arena, the most cost-effective way to do that would be to add it on top of the new change rooms, the new dressing rooms. If council chose to do that, rather than trying to do it on top of the existing building. And then the, the red area reflects the boundary of the front entrance enhancements. And I believe that those items are also captured in the required scope. So that red area, the improvements to drainage and landscaping and everything else would be covered in the required scope area. And I just want to check that, I see Andy nodding that I got that right. I just want to make sure that that's the case, that the red is covered for those. Thumbs up there, thanks, Andy. Any questions about that at the thirty thousand foot level before we zoom into the ten thousand foot level?
Go ahead, Councilor DeMola.
Well, I think I'm hovering at about thirty-three thousand feet and I don't want to go lower. I'm not sure at what level this question is at, but just through you, Deputy Mayor Keller and me too, Mr. Given. The blue zone in the support drawings at two point six for the main floor arena. We have the, the yellow and the blue. Now, as far as I was concerned, when we first started discussions, we were more focused on the yellow area for the improvement. So when the council-supported funding was discussed, I mean, this is almost half of that six point, something million that's in the, in the council requested scope. So I, I, I don't know, is it, is, was that added to the scope requested or? Because I don't remember that being part of the requested scope. So is that something kind of that? So is that something kind of that was put in there as a potential?
Yes, so the last presentation, and I think we do have some drawings that show, we can call some drawings that show previous sort of concepts. But through the design process, the team recognized that there's bumping out. There was a concept of the council, I don't remember bumping out the hallway essentially. And the space that is interior hallway space today being claimed by the existing changerooms and creating a new hallway outside the footprint of the building. So we identified that that was possible. And, and still really didn't offer the functional enhancements that public would expect. The configuration of changers would change, but we wouldn't substantially increase the number of changers. But we'd lose some on the south side to get them to be a proper size. We could squeeze in some more on the north side. But I think, and Director Ree can speak to that concept as we go through the presentation. So we, we could do, with a very limited expansion to the footprint of the building by creating a hallway, we could make some modest improvements to the changers. In our views of administration, they actually really didn't provide significant functional benefit other than maybe improving accessibility at a very high cost. The, and so we, the team went back to, literally, the team went back to the drawing board and said, well, what else could you do? And the option of the larger expanded blue area to the west came forward. It's essentially a large expansion of the footprint of the facility. But this new construction outside the footprint that can be essentially re-geared construction that allows you a lot more design flexibility and really offers, I think, the enhancements to programming, flexibility and utility for users of the facility that we think that part of users would expect. We can, again, we'll go through that, that council deMotta, to sort of show what's under that wall. So you can see what that is and then you can judge for yourself whether that's the, the right type of facility. But administration looked at the option of staying as tight to the footprint as possible and said that it is small enough to do it that way, just to squeeze it in in a compromised fashion. If you're going to do something, administration would recommend we should do the 3.3 million because it will offer the most functionality that users could want.
So in large part, the 2.5 million dollar swing, that's kind of attributed to that. That was initially part of the, not part of the funding, but it's been rolled into the council requested scope. Even though it's not something we requested to leave it, right? I just, just for the point of clarity there.
The, well, council, council requested scope did ask administration to bring back more information on expanding the dressing rooms outside the footprint of the facility. We looked at that and said, we can extend the footprint, expand outside of the footprint of the facility. Doing it in a limited fashion really offers no benefit to users. If council wants to expand outside the facility, then you should consider doing it in a more wholesome fashion. The, what we can do within our budget is improve the, you know, update of the in-place. And administration recommends that if, again, I think it'll be helpful when we get into seeing the schematics and layout of those areas. If council doesn't, not by this stage, doing that major expansion to the dressing rooms, then administration recommendation would be, let's just do a small update for now. Do it with the money that we have available. And at some future point, some future council can decide that they're taking a major project to really improve the functionality of the facility. But what we're advising is, don't do it half the way. It really doesn't offer the benefit that community would accept.
And if I may finish up it, just because we're on the blue zone and I don't know if we're losing altitude here. But I do want to address the Zamboni expansion area. And, and it's only because during our tour, we were left under the impression that Zambonis aren't getting bigger. And that perhaps an enhancement there wouldn't be necessary. And that's for clarity on the change, that's all.
Absolutely. You know, let's go to, councilor DeMotta, if I can, let's go to the next slide here that does start to zoom us in a little bit, because it gives us a better basis to discuss that Zamboni, Zamboni room expansion. And Andy, this is where I'm going to hand it off to you to kind of do that orientation through the colors, what they mean, and which color is in required scope and which one is in council requested scope, just a concept of differentiation.
For sure. So the, the yellow that you see on the, on the floor plan here, that includes, or that's the scope that is included in the required scope. And, and that includes just a renovation of the, of the dressing rooms and the, and the spaces as they are today. So on the north, northeast corner of the arena, there's an existing women's dressing room there. And that would just be renovated as, as is. To the southeast corner, there's an existing ice plant room. And, and that would just be converted into another dressing room. And then underneath the south bleachers, there's, I believe, four dressing rooms there today. And those would just be, as Bill stated earlier, that would just be basically renovated. The, just the architectural finishes essentially. The blue color, so starting on the northwest corner, that would be an expansion to the north. So essentially, because we're taking out the, the storage shed, we need to make up some storage space. So, so there's two reasons why, why this expansion is required. Because we're taking out access to the arena to the west for the Zamboni. We need to provide access to the, to the north. So we do need to fit that Zamboni in there and, and make that space a little bit more functional. And then we also need to add a storage room to the, to the east, which is that additional space. So there's basically two overhead doors that would be required on the north side. So the storage space that was in the, the storage shed is now being relocated to, to that area inside the arena. The larger volume to the, to the west would be an addition of five new dressing rooms that, that sort of meet today's standards. And then the corridor to the, to the south of the yellow bar would be, I guess, if we decide to proceed with it, would allow us to expand the dressing rooms within, sorry, just below the, the south bleachers. So just improving the functionality of those, of those existing dressing rooms today. The purple box to the, to the north, underneath the north bleachers, would allow us to add an additional two dressing rooms within that space. And that's, that's at a value of 288,000. The blue box is 3.3. And then, as I just kind of said earlier, the, the yellow would be 879,000. And that's already included in the required scope.
Thank you, Andy. Councilor DeMotta?
Deputy Mayor, just if I can, Andy, Andy, you had sent me a detail of what the expanded dressing rooms would look like. Can I just ask you to sort of be prepared to call that up so we can show council what's underneath the blue?
Of course, yeah.
Thank you, Councilor DeMotta.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller and me. I think if we called that up, it might answer my question. Currently, we have an existing access for vehicles that can go into the arena. And I imagine that that's still going to be part of this? Or do we lose that access? And that's probably the detail you're talking about.
So the access would be from the north now. The access point would be moved to the north. And I can, I can go through that when I show you the more detailed plans.
Yeah. Why don't we do that? Christopher, you can swap your screen share and we'll allow Andy to call that up and do his screen share so we can see the detail of the dressing rooms.
Everybody can see my screen?
It's going to be somewhat small for council, so if you can zoom in as much as possible, Andy.
Okay.
On a TV screen across the room, so.
Okay. Okay. Let me do as big as I can. So as I kind of mentioned previously, there's an expansion to the north in the Zamboni room area. So there would be an overhead door going out to the north like that for the Zamboni room. Another storage room that we would construct here for the Gator storage that is currently outside in that storage shed. So, and then there, that would allow just some additional space here for maintenance and, and storage. To the west, we have one, two, three, four, five dressing rooms that are accessed off of a corridor that is constructed just outside of the existing arena footprint. Access to, to this arena is, is from a lobby that would be constructed as, as far south as, as possible. So there's, there's the doors there. There'd be an elevator here to the second floor lounge. What you see to the south here is that, is that corridor, the existing footprint of the arena to the south. I'll just draw this, draw that in another color, is, is right here. So as you can see, we would take those existing dressing rooms and, and expand them all the way to the exterior wall of the arena. Because right now, the existing dressing rooms are basically sitting right here. And there's a corridor still between the dressing rooms and that exterior wall. So that just allows us to make these dressing rooms a little bit larger and make the showers and toilets and, and urinals meet, meet today's standards. So on, on the south, you get another, what is it, three dressing rooms as well. The existing ice plant room gets converted to referee dressing rooms. And then this, the space to the north, we could convert to, to storage or leave as a dressing room.
Thanks, Andy. Appreciate for council that that is small and far away. Andy, you did as good a job as presenting that as you could possibly do. You can't see the council chamber setup, but it is a bit small. Council, we can share that with you. But I think that the major, you know, things that I, observations that I've pointed out to council is that this offers the opportunity, those five changerooms that are 100% new construction and would fully meet all the modern expectations of all the variety of types of users that we receive at the facility. And I think council knows well that we receive a pretty wide variety of users in Jasper, all the way from small tots and, and people just starting hockey where you may have up to four teams on ice at any one time. Now they're using half ice. So you could have four teams playing and another four teams in the changing rooms. So having eight changing rooms would be an improvement. And then also those large, fully modern changerooms would be more appropriate for the high-end types of users that we see come to Jasper for training camps and other auctions from time to time. And so those five new changerooms to the west would be that major enhancement. The changerooms to the south are greatly expanded. They're, they're, they're still not the same as the five brand-new changerooms, but they would have greatly expanded functionality. And they would have full accessibility meeting modern standards. They would, Bill, as you can see, still be somewhat smaller, still somewhat constrained by the fact that they're underneath the bleachers. But they would be vastly improved over what we have today. So you would have five, a total of eight very functional changerooms that could accommodate all types of both local users and the, the higher-end users that we get into the facility from time to time.
Councilor DeMotta has a question?
Thank you. Only because I can't see the new proposed five dressing rooms make each other on the shower?
That's correct, yeah. They have their own shower and toilet, toilet stalls, sinks. Yeah, they're all self-contained in the dressing room. Yeah. The other thing, sorry, I did forget to mention is the new dressing rooms on the west side. There is the ability to sort of link the dressing rooms. If, if, if you have sort of teams that are mixed gender, you can link the dressings together, which you aren't necessarily able to do on the, on the south side.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller and me. I'm interested in following up, Councilor Melnitz's question, both about vehicle access. So if we need a vehicle, you know, boom lift or something to hang a new score clock, something like that, that access would be through the Zamboni room now? Is that the, the only option that would be available to get a vehicle into the, the arena slab?
That's correct, unless there, unless we get rid of, I guess, one dressing room on the west side and keep the, the two accesses.
All right. It's fine if that is the access point, as long as it's configured with access or other vehicles in mind in terms of, of height requirements. I don't know the size of vehicle that we might need to get in. Previously, we had to have a hoist in there to clean and repaint the girders. We might need mechanical work on, on lights or on the score clock or, or other matters. So as long as it's configured with that in mind, that's fine. The other question I had with, with respect to emergency access. Now, if there is a medical emergency, an ambulance can go to the entry exit door about midway on the south wall. What would be the configuration for a medical emergency under this new configuration? I, I see there's lobby doors down in the southwest corner, but access is otherwise restricted. It seems to me that there is a little hallway between the northernmost second dressing room and the, and the ones on the south. But I don't know whether that's an evacuation route or what it is. I can't tell from my distance. But how would, how would medical personnel access the ice surface if they needed to in a, in an emergency situation?
Yeah, so my, my assumption is that they would use these doors. There's a series of exit doors from the arena right here, as well as on the north side there. This is the main street to the west. And this is fairly close, like this entry is fairly close to that street. And there is also, I guess, another set of doors back here just off the main, the main entry that we've extended to the west. So there's quite a few options for, for medical, for medical access.
Thank you. And the last question I have is, what are the access points for the new dressing room users to the ice surface? So the, the expanded ones that are shown in yellow on the map that we have would still use the access point, I presume, on the south side of the building between the players' benches. The dressing rooms at, at the west, what would be their access point? And the ones that show on purple, so along the north wall, what would be their access point to the ice surface?
As, as Andy answers, I just want to be clear, your worship, administration isn't recommending the northern addition. So maybe just focus on how there's current access and how those west, west changerooms, what players would access those. So the, the purple, administration, unless council wants to try to squeeze within the existing budget and do really, want to improve as some changers, but not really increase functionality of the search.
Yeah, so as, as you said, the, the dressing rooms to the south would use this access point below the bleachers. And I would think the, the west would work just the same way. You would come out the, this corridor or out through this, this door and, and use this corridor to access the, the players' box.
All right. Thank you, and, and thank you, Mr. Given, and the difficulty of access to the not recommended purpose. Might be a good reason to not recommend the purpose.
That was one of the key recommendations, your worship. Director Reeves does hand up the list of that.
Director Ree?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Kellerampi and and your worship counsel. So I don't know if any of you are familiar with some of the larger rinks in the world, but that walk that you can see from what we might call the farthest away dressing room to the ice is still a reasonable walk. It's not something outrageous. But to your worship's point, the dressing rooms in the purple, if we are to add dressing rooms in the purple, the walk for those dressing room users is either across the ice, which is very problematic if you're not wearing skates, or it's longer all the way around to the players boxes, if you will. But it also is far more of a path through the public. And so this path, the operational effectiveness of this path is, to your point, your worship, far better than under those north dressing rooms.
I have a question. I'm curious where the girls' dressing room is now. If council was to add five new dressing rooms plus the existing dressing rooms that are going to be renovated, do we really need the dressing room that's in yellow to the north? Would that be more functional as a storage room or a referee and keep all the dressing rooms in one area?
Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Kellerampi. You are correct. That is unlikely to remain as a sort of constant use dressing room. We would likely maintain it as a possible use dressing room should the need arise. However, there are operational needs like some storage and a janitor room function that we do need over on that side of the rink. So that space, once it's freed up, would have some real operational gains for us. Again, not requiring all the athletes to travel through all the public to get onto the ice.
Mr. Reed, Counselor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Kellerampi. I have a question maybe for Director Reed. I remember in our tour, we talked about just the fact that people can renovate the Zamboni door safety issue. Will that be blocked off and solved with this renovation?
We will aim to do the best we can. The fire exiting does sort of put a controlling limit on what we can actually sort of restrict off. So yes, we're going to do the best we can, but the the facility still has many constraints that we can't get around. We will, with this plan, stop the the children lapping the rink that you all experienced on that tour. So yes, we are already putting in some safety improvements. There, I'll stop there.
Mr. Reed, any other questions, Mr. Reed, or Andy, Counselor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Kellerampi and Mr. Reed. The the purple new dressing room renovation is is not included. I would think that that's probably also the less desirable of of all of the options that we have. And that space, as opposed to being dressing rooms, could then be used for purposes in the multipurpose hall. Or sorry, what purposes in the arena?
Go ahead, Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Kellerampi, through to Counselor Melnick. So yes, the short answer is yes, there are needs and uses. Currently, part of that purple area is gear swap area, for example. Part of it is some maintenance equipment. Part of it is some operational equipment, mechanical rather equipment. So yes, that purple space will be well used in the future arena operation.
And I have a question. With the renovation of the existing dressing rooms, in the past, it has been brought to our attention. There's a lot of ventilated and asbestos in those walls. And if it's that, if we disturb that, would it be best not to just? How will that affect the renovation? I'm just curious because in the past, it has caused quite a bit of problems for renovations. So sometimes I'm wondering, is it best to just renovate the bathrooms there and kind of leave the existing if they're building the new? What's your recommendations on that?
I'll speak to that a little bit to be supplemented by by the team on the technical details. My understanding is first that we've done a significant amount of remediation over the years. If you walk back through there, you can see all the holes that were punched in to drain, to drain. I'm not sure that's quite the right term, but to address some of the wrinkly, there still would be potential issues with that. And that's also why we're carrying that additional contingency for hazardous materials. So there's a recognition of some uncertainty with respect to that. And there has been a significant amount of work in those areas. I don't know, Andy or Andrew, if you have a technical sort of findings response to that.
I was going to say the same thing, Bill. We are carrying a a number in the required scope to deal with with that should it come up during construction.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Kellerampi, through you to Mr. Given and or the team. Well, I guess it'd probably be to Andy. You mentioned that there's an elevator potential for accessing the viewing room on the west side in the new drawings. A obviously, I just, I don't want to assume, but this day and age, it has to be wheelchair accessible. And then also, I can't see from this angle where the stairs are. You know, and obviously, that's incorporated, but I'm not sure. I didn't see.
Yeah, so we do have two sets of stairs that are required in order to meet our travel distances. So there's a set of stairs here, and I can show you the second floor plan. There's another set of stairs here, and then there would be the elevator right there. And the overall footprint would sit, I think it's on the second page, sits basically up until this bay right here.
Probably seeing that that I did, but so essentially, the the two stair accesses are in the within the footprint of the new west edition. One about the top third of the top quarter and then another one at the bottom, which is where the elevator, the second floor.
There would also be access to the second floor from the top of the bleachers.
Correct, yeah.
Counselor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Kellerampi. Right now, in the arena, kind of the southwest corner, there are five minor sport storage lockers. I'm worried if those are still going to be there or moved somewhere else.
Yeah, those would have to be removed as part of this rental if we do a west expansion. We haven't discussed where those would go at this at this stage yet.
Yeah, just make the observation that that's a level of detail that, you know, right now, we were obsessed with trying to identify the most functional solutions, recognizing that there are numbers for details that we need to sort it out. Mr. Reed referenced sort of the the yellow, the existing women's changer that might offer some potential for those sort of things. So there's flexibility within the facility to handle that kind of use. We appreciate that that's something that the community relies on. Okay, and and thanks very much, team. That was really great getting into those details. So maybe while we are here, Andy, if you want to go on your screen to the second level in this area, counsel, in your package, because I know you have your screen and we also have one that Andy has up, they'll go to the next section and has the blue and the brown area. This basically just shows the different alternatives for second quarter lounge. You can do it on the west at that 1.7 million dollars and and Andy has that on the screening council chambers for you. Or you could do it on the east side, which was the original sort of consideration. And as we went through that in more detail, there was identified the cost that would be significantly more to do it on that side. And in any case, you'll see in the report that administration isn't recommending the addition of the second floor lounge at this time. Counsel could choose to do so if they wish. The only other things that I might identify is that the blue edition, on the second quarter lounge, they would also bring an elevator that would provide direct access for that to the to the bleachers. So you'd be able to enter on the west side, hop an elevator, go up to the bleachers, stands, which would really improve the functionality there. This configuration that Andy has on his screen of the brown area doesn't does not provide direct access to the bleachers from the from the east view lounge configuration. So again, not a more expensive and doesn't offer the range of benefits that the other arrangement potentially does. And that's why it isn't wasn't highlighted within the council recommended options, or the council identified options. Really, the administration's saying, if you were going to do a second to the lounge, it should be on the west. But as you see, the RFD administration is recommending that the lounge should go for this. If there were any questions?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Kellerampi, through Mr. Given or to the to the technical crew. There was previously a question about stairs, and I understand now where the stairs are on the main level to take you up to this potential lounge on the second level. There's also an indication in the drawing that I looked at here that there are entry stores into what is called a lobby. But is it correct? And I get this apart from Director Reed's response to it, to the question about the discouragement of players using dressing rooms and then walking through public areas. I'm assuming that the ground floor level of the dressing room area, including the new area at the west, would be intended to be restricted to the players and and personnel connected to the team and not a public entrance. So that those stairs that we talked about for the second level would not be the primary point of access to the lounge. Is that is that fair or am I reading too much into it? And I'm confused because you talked about a lobby and I a lobby I generally consider to be a public lobby.
Mr. Reed?
So two things. One, we are doing a fire drill test in our building, so I apologize for the beeping. I'll be very short and sweet. Again, this building has compromises that we will never be able to escape. This is the best of all of the solutions. So yes, would we be able to block off all five of those change rooms so they don't have public access to the change room hallway? Yes, but would we be able to block off entirely the west and the south corner of this building? Unlikely. There are certain times when, yes, possibly due to usage, we could. But those fire exits in this perfect moment of testing our fire alarms, those fire exits are mandatory. And so that lobby will still be a publicly accessible lobby for much of the operation. But it's still less public access and less public conflict than anything under the north side bleachers.
Mr. Reed?
I could just give you two more questions. I think the the access to that proposed lounge from the south side bleachers, would that be from the existing walkway on the second floor now? Or would that have been expanded as well to mimic the expansion on the main floor? Is there any need to push out the wall on the second floor behind the bleachers?
Andy, do you want to go to the second floor plan? Because we're not proposing a significant renovation to the bleachers themselves, I think we're just trying to tie into the existing walkway that's behind them at the moment.
All right. Thank you for that. And final question. The 1.7 million dollar estimated cost, is that in addition to the 3.3 million for the for the main floor?
Yes, George, it is.
And can the first floor be constructed to accommodate a future second floor?
That would be very cheap to see.
Yes, it it could be, although the initial construction of the first floor would still need to allow for the space for the stairs, for the elevator shaft and just the heavier structure for the floor loading. So it wouldn't be a straight, from a cost perspective, it wouldn't be a straight deletion of the second floor.
Thank you for that.
Counselor Demoda, then Counselor Hall?
Well, probably to dovetail that that discussion. For clarity, again, administrations not recommending a viewing area, period.
That's correct, Counselor. Yeah, in in recognition of our fiscal capacity and the ability for the design to enable that at some point in the future, administration is recommending. It's an option to consider. We may have to reconsider sort of financing proposal, but this time it's not, you'll see, there's not a major recommendations that I heard.
My question revolves around the cost effectiveness, if I may. Deputy Mayor, thank you. Just if we're going to go with the first floor where the dressing rooms are on the west side, that whole entire wall has to be reconfigured because we're going to be removing the garage door, so to speak, the the overhead door. And then if we want to consider a second floor in the future, it's going to have to be reconstructed again to accommodate glass and all this other stuff and then.
No, I I don't believe so, Counselor Demoda, again, Andy and Andrew can speak to that. But I think your your question is revolving around the second story on the west side. How much, you know, would we be doing any work that would be wasted on the second story of the west side if we didn't build the west lounge?
Correct.
Guys, I don't know if you can speak to that, but you know, would we essentially be building at the first floor level and not touching the upper floors of the existing building?
That's that's correct. In any any in any of those scenarios, we would only be adjusting or affecting that existing exterior wall to the minimum we need to to fill in doors, cut in new windows and so on.
Yeah, there are openings that look from the second floor into the arena, but that could be something that is done later.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This would be a question for Director Reed. Is there a an entrance for players on the northwest point of the arena? This kind of goes back to Mayor Aaron's point of player safety. I know that teams, opposing teams need to exit dressing rooms and go a different way than the other team and potentially go on to this a different way.
The northwest, right now, we just are showing an exit door, but there this could, I guess, in theory, be be an entrance as well or an exit for the for that use.
I wonder too, is there a is there an entrance onto the ice at a point or gate? I just can't remember if there's one up on that side of the arena. I know there's a Zamboni door, but I don't know if there is.
There is a gate. There is a a gate here, yes. If that's your question.
Thank you. Counselor Melnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Kellerampi. We'd like to ask you a question about the second floor arena lounge. And it speaks to besides a viewing area. Is any or given that estimated price of 1.7 billion, is there any allowance for cooking and or kitchen area to be facilitated in that area?
Yes, we are showing a servery in this space. Not we we aren't assuming a a large scale commercial kitchen, but we are, we were assuming a servery in in this space.
I think counsel, the the intention would be that food crap would happen somewhere else. Cooking preparation of food would happen somewhere else and then would be transported to this location on the second story through the elevator to the servery where it would be, you know, maintained warm and served to there. To the servery where it would be, you know, maintained warm and served to there. I think their water function would also be handled through there, not permissive of party. But if this would not be a food preparation area, it would be, as Andy said, a servery.
Okay, now I think that clarifies it. Just an indication then that there wouldn't be any cooks or. Or natural gas lines going in for for actual cooking of food.
That's correct, Councilor. Go ahead. Thanks, Deputy Mayor Keller. So I know that we are, we're getting a bit long in rare to lunch. I wonder maybe what we could do is go through the balance of the presentation. If we wish to, we could break for lunch and then return to discuss the RFD. So I just think about our consultants here. We get through the presentation, ask the technical questions that have been valuable and oriented to answer council's questions. We'll go through that. And then the RFD really focuses on the so what, you know, and the strategy behind it, which I think is the council's special. And I need the consulting report. So. Andy, I think you're in charge of our screen share there. And so I don't know if you have the council package. Available or handy to swap out of this sort of detail view. Or we can go back. There you go, right there. Perfect. Thank you. So on screen, this is the dressing room configuration. So we just spoke in detail about it. We'll maybe go to the next section. Which is the sort of most altered options of the second floor viewing areas. Again, I think we discussed that in some level detail. I'll talk you through that game. The next slide is now going. Down to the basement level. The blue area is the full renovation of the existing washrooms to improve internal accessibility and life cycle maintenance improvements. That's the $495,000. And you'll see that is not reflected in the. That is. Not reflected in the recommendation in your RFD. What is reflected in the recommendation in your RFD is the conversion of a non-functional sauna to a third universal washer. So the team discussed these, identified what was possible. A significant renovation to those basement washrooms. With accessibility and the fit and finish of those areas, but at a significant figure cost. There is the non-functional sauna that administration advised would be the priority so we could handle accessibility. And the universality of the changing room by using a non-functional system for higher level purpose for.
Councilor Demoda.
Yes, I just wanted to say that unfortunately I have to leave. But I was going to lean on other councillors who have more experience in building for the recommendation going forward anyway. So I have full trust in in confidence in the people here today. So thank you very much to our presenters and the work that's been done on this. It's it's quite extensive and detailed and I really appreciate it and I look forward to other recommendations.
Thank you, Councilor Demoda.
So thanks, Deputy Mayor Keller. So I don't know if anybody had any questions on this. I think of the areas. This one's. Probably one of the more straightforward ones. So we can move on to the next section, which we're moving over to the fitness and aquatic center. And this is just provided to give a bit of the differentiation between what is in the the required scope, sort of included in the money that we have. And what you would get for the extra money that's in the council requested scope. The required scope is the green area, basically addressing that to renovating, relocating existing universal washer and dresser. Removing the access from the pool deck, assuming configuration of the mans and then partial renovation of its change room and locker room. In that scenario, there would be no changes to the mans locker room. For the additional 342, sorry, 324,000 dollars, you get a full renovation of both mans and mans change rooms. As well as the renovations and the configuration of the different structures that are there. So that's again, just the difference. We want to make sure that there's. A distinction between what we get in the base scope and what we get in the extended scope. If there are no questions there.
Questions?
Then the final area in the presentation is on the administration and seniors center area. And this illustrates the concept of relocating and consolidating administrative spaces. And relocating the seniors, existing senior center. So it's more adjacent and provides greater access to the rest of the sort of public areas of the city. So you'd have a differentiation of. If you're coming to the building for a strictly administrative purpose, you'd have one entrance there and access all the administration. If you're coming to use the senior center, you could still have your direct exterior access into that space, that private space. And it would also have better access to the rest of the amenities of the facility because it would be more closely located. You can see the cost that's there. This is in a council requested scope and you'll see that it's not recommended at this time. But administration, since it's a project, could move at some future stage. So Deputy Mayor Keller, I think that that's all that I had for the presentation from GDC and our team. If there are any additional technical questions, this would be the opportunity to ask those. If we were to break for lunch, when we return, we'll go through the administrative RFD and talk about the funding strategy. And why administration recommended some things and others.
Any more questions for our technical team? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just. Hopefully, very quickly, as I understand it, then with the initial required scope that we haven't discussed today. In any detail. There is a proposed elevator off what is now the lobby, which would access the upper. Curling lounge and also access the basement area. Within the requested scope, we're talking about potentially a second elevator. For a second floor lounge at the west end of the building. So we would wind up with a building going from no elevators to two elevators. Can you tell me just for ballpark? What an elevator costs to install?
And speaking with our our cost estimator, right now, it's in the ballpark of 500 to 600,000 for this project. Although that is that is for the the elevator inside the building. I didn't ask him specifically for the elevator inside the expansion. That that might be a little bit less, but.
Yeah, I just let you hear a ballpark. So that's close enough for my needs. Thank you. Any other questions? I'd like to thank Andrew and Andrew and Mr. Reed for attending the meeting today and. If there is no other questions, I will call this meeting to a recess. Until one o'clock and then we will come back and discuss the. RFD and I don't believe we will need you gentlemen to join us for that. And I would like to thank you for all the information you provided. And also thank you, Chris. I didn't see you on the screen. Welcome back, everybody, from lunch break. It is 1:03 and the meeting is back in progress. So. In the, before lunch, we received a lot of information. We have the core. Renovation and then we have the areas that we may add on to a lot. So any questions for Mr. Given that we heard that you haven't had answered just before we move on? So are we all in approval of the. The core, the approval of the activity center renovation project scope? That came in at 10 million, six four four. That we had received back and we approved the concept of it and. Mr. Given, would you like to say something?
Sure. Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Keller. So in the attached RFD, you'll see a recommendation from administration and as Deputy Mayor was. Heading towards there, it's really broken up into three parts. So the recommendation is that committee recommend council. So again, just for clarity, we're not seeking final approval today. Appreciation, this is committee and we would be committee for the accepting council for consideration, final consideration, final two and two. But the committee recommend council approve the activity center renovation project scope, inclusive of all of the required scope items. With the exception of renovations to the existing dressing rooms below the sub. And that committee recommend council through the inclusion of the following council requested scope items. The arena dressing room expansion to the west and south. And I'm just going around the numbers while we're discussing it, like 3.3 million. The activity center conversion of the sauna to additional washrooms of 100 to 2,000. And the aquatic center complete renovation of all existing change rooms at 342,000. And then finally, a final motion that we recommend council approve amendments to the capital budget as required to reflect the. Above items as funded. So in in speaking to this, the the first of those recommended motions. Really speaks to council confirming how we should spend the money that we have today and have had for some time. That exists in our current budget. And if I can, through the RFD, you you can go down below. To the financial implications and you can see administrative breakdown of how administration would propose to fund the 10.16 million dollars. That would be 541,000 dollars coming from capital reserves. 204,000 coming from the gas tax fund. 4.4 million from adventure, the borrowing. 2.2 million from NSI and 2.7 million from the ISF program. This is money that is reflected in the budget and those amounts reflect what was in in the budget that was approved by you. And as you can see, the majority of funding for this sort of acquired scope items comes from other sources. With the minority of funding coming from Jasper taxpills to adventure and capital reserves. The second motion is really where we get into amended for council. Where council has the opportunity to really choose which enhancements to the facility provide the most value to residents. And I think the answer to that is not only subjective, but really is for council to determine. Administration has made some recommendations of items that if council wished to add anything off of that. Council requested scope list. Our administrative suggestion would be those three, the the full dressing room expansion to the west and south. So essentially, all of those items that were close to the building footprint, adding the five full-size new dressing rooms. Reconfiguring the existing dressing rooms to expand, to go where additional space from hallways, adding a new hallway on that side. So that would provide the most function for all of our local users, all the way from the Fox, where there's many kids on the ice and teens at the same time. All the way to higher-end users that we, so that we might hold some time, not in meeting more expectations that would be regular. The second of those items that administration would recommend is the conversion of the sauna. On the lower floor to a additional washroom. Understanding is that sauna isn't currently functional, hasn't been for some amount of time and is currently dead space. We believe that we can add additional functionality and accessibility to the washrooms and basement. Through this modest improvement and leave a larger renovation of those basement washrooms for some time in the future. And the final item that administration is recommending off that menu, as it were, is the complete renovation of all existing change rooms. Rather than just minor adjustments to reorient universal change rooms and and change their access on to the pool deck. And the subsequent need to adjust a bit in the ministry. This amount, 342,000, would be a, would handle all of those items, as well as a complete renovation of all the mess in the change rooms and fitness and aquatic center to a modern standard. So those were the items off of the, again, I use the term, we see the menu of options that are available to council and council requested scope items. Administration, of course, is happy to take direction, but we did provide you some other sort of world of options that are there. And we were wanting to provide you some advice of what, in our view, would it. Need a balance of enhanced functionality and usability of the facilities. While acknowledging the need for physical constraints, but on this topic. You'll see that we're not at this time recommending the second floor viewing lounge, but yeah. We would suggest that that is a project that could be seen in the, and we had some time. For municipality could, you know, work to identify external funding sources, community partners, if I'm busy, to do that at a later date. And so as administration, I recommend we go forward, but we would work with the design team to ensure that the, if. The additional change rooms went ahead, that it would be constructed in such a way that you would be able to do that second story as a part of the future. And then that final motion, there is is really. A direction to administration to amend the capital plan just to conform to the, this project scope that council approved. That is the RFD. I know there's other items that council may have questions about or discuss. Administration suggests that this is in alignment with. The culture and recreation services and facilities review those adopted by past council. Had a lot of insight into resident priorities for investment in facilities. And really didn't identify adding new facilities, and they said, let's reinvest in the things that we have. And so there were five different items, items one, one, two, three, nine and 12 out of that. Out of that review that identified, that are identified and supported by these recommended additions. Just below that, you'll also see administrations recommended funding sources. Should council choose to approve the council requested scope items, the essential dressing rooms, conversion of the sauna. And the complete renovation of all the changes in the aquatic center. Administration would recommend an approach that would see 1.8 million dollars of funding towards that coming from NSI. 900,000 dollars of funding from the gas tax fund and then 1.13 million from the venture. Deputy Mayor Keller, I'm sure there's questions. I'm sure that there was a session, but again, it's a reminder, we're seeking direction from the council, from the committee today to council. Ideally, we receive a confirmation from council next week on whatever scope council determines is appropriate. So that we can enable the design team to move to the next level of detail. And to continue the project moving forward to get whatever scope council chooses is important, that we continue that momentum and get to the next level.
Councilor Demoda.
Thanks for having me back. I do have a couple of questions and and maybe one of them will be after, you know, the motions. Recommended going forward. But for the first one. I just wanted to just reassure a little bit of the funding sources here. So when we're talking about new money for this project, it's going to be five and a half billion dollars through the venture, correct?
Deputy Mayor Keller, Councilor Demoda, so for the required scope items, that venture of 4.4 million. And the capital reserves of 541,000 are already allocated and committed in the budget that's approved by council. So that doesn't propose any. It doesn't propose any borrowing different than what council previously approved in question. The expansion of borrowing is with respect to the council request. Does that make sense? Sorry, Councilor.
Yeah, no, it totally does. So so the 1.1 will be in addition to the 4.4 that we already agreed on. And so that's, okay, so that'll be, that's still kind of money that's added on to this. So for the the 541,000 that's coming out of capital reserves. I forget if we had a a plan to replenish that and and does that need to be. Reinvested in in that particular reserve? And was that thought of in 2022? Are we going to have to revisit that for the next question?
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Keller. So Councilor Demoda, the the item there is the collection of. Money that's withdrawn from all different capital reserves that would apply to this area. So council of one of the, the item there is the collection of money that's withdrawn from all different capital reserves that would apply to this area. And for example, in the, in handy, actually, we have financial information that's not true earlier. So you can see that year end, the recreation reserve, restricted reserve. Has a balance of just over five hundred thousand. So we do replenish that annually. In twenty twenty one, we added two hundred and fifty thousand to that reserve and we were one hundred and seventy seven percent. So that, that does have an in and out. That particular reserve does have five hundred and fifty five thousand. And some of the items in that total of five hundred and forty one thousand from reserves may have been from other, you know, the. Some of the other capital reserves that we have. So that's the total of, of money withdrawn from all of the different reserves.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I really appreciate that.
Other questions, Mr. Reed?
Thank you. I was still trying to formulate a number of questions. The. Required. Work. In the arena now, as I understand. Is what one point is.
Your worship, please.
Where are my formalities, you know, I view so the. Well, we're, we're looking at, the first motion proposed is to approve the required work and then to look at the requested work.
Yes.
And so with the required work. As I understand the documents, in particular, each thirty one of our agenda. There's about one, well, almost two million dollars worth of work under the arena. The requested work. With respect to the arena. As recommended by administration would add. Now, I'm not sure whether it's three point three or three point five to that. The question I have is, are there efficiencies of scale? By doing that requested work in conjunction with the required work or are the two. So separated that it, it doesn't really make any difference? In other words, if, if the requested work was put off for a couple of years. Would we lose an opportunity that we now have?
So yes. Thanks, your worship, for sort of providing additional clarification. So. In the required scope, as you said, there's one point eight nine three million dollars of work in the arena. That work consists of upgrades to the ventilation, CO two sensors. Improve the exit and the self features by widening the cross aisles and stairs. Some pavements within the arena. The addition of keyless entrance, like exterior doors, the addition of decommunication of the arena. There's no expansion to the, to the rest of facilities. Those items are not particularly tied to the addition of the change rooms. I think the benefit of the approach of adding new change rooms outside of the existing builder footprint. Is that it can move quite independently. I mean, then. If the project did go forward. One could imagine the facility operating in its existing configuration for some time. New change rooms being added and then switching over to use the new change rooms and that while the old change rooms were being reconfigured. So. That is to say that they do move quite independently. And there are not addicted to be significant cost savings from tying the projects together because there's not a significant amount of that. There would be some mobilization and demobilization costs that can be combined. For example, if we did not do the addition of the five change rooms to the west and south. If we did that at some point in the future, we would have to reengage some designers to do that design. Go through the tender process, there would be inflationary costs and all those other sorts of things. But there are no specific reasons why it would have to be attached. In terms of the implementation to, to be required.
And if I may, then. Would there be any concern that. Including requested scope items. Could interfere with the efficient role of the required scope items? In other words, if we had. Entirely separate contractors, as could be the case. Both mobilizing and undertaking work. Would they be getting in each other's way to such an extent that somebody would be delayed and we would wind up paying additional costs?
Your worship, I think the answer to that is yes. The, we are already managing some of that because the ice plant relocation project. Was previously awarded and is somewhat separate. We are fortunate that we have a high level of collaboration between teams in that, Director Reed is overseeing both. So we are already managing two different teams. And we don't foresee any challenges in that. I think if we added a third team starting at a different phase, essentially a thorough design, that would add a significant complication and add a lot of risk to the project.
Council Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This might be a similar line of question, but I was just wondering, is there anything? In the requested future unfunded that just makes sense to tie into, like I'm looking at, so for example, the. Enhances the west entrance and then I scroll down to future, there's a use of waste heat to melt snow in the front entry. Is that something that? Okay, is there anything in here that just makes sense to do with? Does that make sense? I believe.
Yeah. For Council Hall, Deputy Mayor Keller, I mean, yes, and don't make sense. It would, it would make, be no sense to do everything all at once. Because as, as, as worship alluded to, you know, there are efficiencies of scale and coordination. Conflict is reduced. Your loss project will be more nearly and less costly. You do everything at once. I think administration's acknowledging here that, that we can't do everything at once. We just wouldn't have a physical capacity. So we do need to identify the things that are best suited to moving as independent projects at some point in the future. That wouldn't have substantial benefit from going ahead with the current, you know, required scope. So, you know, if you're asking, is there anything we'd like to pull forward? Internally, really have had those debates within the administration and there are, you know, there really are a variety of views. And to their credit, our facilities and asset management team. To their credit, would want to spend everything behind the scenes. Because there's a lot of behind the scenes work that needs to happen and they advocated very strongly that we should. Raise the relative priority of those things in the events of some more public facing things. Director Reed and his team acknowledge the importance of maintaining the assets. And know that the users have demands and that there are limitations on the program. So they, so that internal struggle. Has, has led to really a rest discussion. And the result is this sort of recommended scope, saying this is what we as administration collectively believe needs to happen now with the money we have. It's up to council to decide if you want to enhance that. And there's other stuff that we'll need in the future and council usually expect to see that in the context of budgets. So. I, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't ask to pull anything forward off that list and substitute something else because there's. It's a judgment call between.
You have a question, Scott?
To help matters move along. And because I am inclined at, at this point. To add this comeback to council with an opportunity. To reconsider and exclude rather than to exclude things now which would then be offered. I am prepared to make a motion now that committee recommend. The council, that council approve the activity center renovation project scope. Inclusive of all required scope items with the exception of renovations to the existing dressing rooms. Below the south bladers at a total cost of ten million, one hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and forty four dollars. And that committee recommend council approve the inclusion of the following council requested scope items. Arena dressing room expansion to the west and south at a cost of. Three million, three hundred and fifty five thousand, seven hundred and fifty six dollars. Activity center conversion of sauna to additional washrooms. At a cost of one hundred and thirty three thousand, two hundred and thirty eight dollars. And aquatic center complete renovation of all existing change rooms at a cost of. Three hundred and forty two thousand, four hundred and ninety seven dollars. And that committee recommend council approve amendment to the capital budget as required to reflect the. Above items as funded items. And I make that motion. With the knowledge that a week hence when this comes back to council. I might be inclined to vote against some of them, but I, I see a benefit in moving the matter forward. Allowing time for reflection, but having all of this back before us in a week's time when we've been made. A final decision and it also gives it an opportunity to. Circulate in public a bit and we may hear some, some feedback as well. So. Rather than excluding, now I would choose to include it all simply as a recommendation to council and debate further again. When it comes to council properly or decision next week.
Any debate or motion? I think it's an excellent idea to have everything recommended and then the public have a week to weigh in on this and have a feel. So I'm going to call the motion on there. So we'll see this back on the. Thank you. Counselor, do you want?
Let me just, while we're on this item, wrapping up. And I don't need to save up too much more time. We've had some correspondence recently about summer camps. Things like that. And because we've just, you know, put a recommendation forward, just, I, I hope to just provide a little bit of clarity. To, you know, because we're going in a different direction with the facility downstairs. In the activity center, that doesn't mean that we're not no longer taking or accepting camps to come to Jasper. We're just redefining, you know, our, our structure and, you know, maybe there might be other opportunities within the town. For some accommodation to, to house people that like becoming here in option camps.
Mr. Reed? Wilson Street, sir?
My apologies, Deputy Mayor Keller, I had to scratch my face. I'm sorry. I can certainly indicate that we have spoken to at least two different camp providers who are still interested. In what possibilities may occur in the future in Jasper, understanding that perhaps dorming people in our facility is not an option. So. I, I would with respect say that councillor Demota is on track. We are, we are still open to that possibility. Given the kind of structural changes that we have spoken about, this council has spoken about in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Good. That's a good query, Danny.
I wonder if I, if I might, if it is the will of council. Perhaps request administration when this matter comes back to council or consideration and decision in the week. If they can provide us with. A forecast and of a general, general, internal particulars, but. With respect to the possibility of, of lost opportunity costs if we proceed with the. Full slate of recommended. Requested scope items and thinking in particular of our other needs. Principally in utilities and I appreciate that we're trying to find utilities from utility charges. But to the extent we may not be able to realize that full potential, if we spend other money now on facilities. Will we compromise opportunities to do other necessary work within the community? So I just, I want to take a look at this through a more inclusive lens if we can to see how this could impact our. Ability for funding other necessary capital projects outside of. Just our, our recreation facilities. And again, I'm, I'm not looking for anything. Itemized or costed necessarily, but just the areas where, where if we proceed with spending these funds, we might. Lose an opportunity to proceed with other. Necessary improvements in the.
Would you put that in your hand? Do you have everything you need, Mr. Reed, in there?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Keller, the, in terms of motion was carried by council, by committee, I think that's, that's fair. Just in terms of the, the discussion, worship raises, we do have some information in the report. That council might want to use spaces for discussion with the community under the financial section. We do have a bit of a forward looking forecast for other. Projects that would require. That, that financing borrowing. There is approximately five point two. That reflects the already approved ice plant relocation and the four point four million dollars that's in the hard scope items. Council's over the discussion of the one point, one million dollars for water meters in the twenty twenty two year. We also have some upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant that could. Be up to six million, six point three million dollars. We have applied grants to offset some of that. So there are a number of convenient areas there. An item that's, and. Council would be able to get some, in the community, to get some sense of that through looking at the capital plan, which just had that five year forecast of other needs. Although those items are reflected as unfunded, since there really are, and there's so many sources of funding. If you see it on the list, there's an amount. Your assumption is it's either coming from taxes or debt. Unless we can try to grant it for it and it's sort of not as central as I think. One of them that doesn't show up, the council might want to think about is, is housing. And to what extent council might wish to borrow some money to facilitate a housing development. We come down pat recently, the rapid housing initiative, the seeking grants. Federal government has announced new federal dollars towards housing. I'm sure we'll seek grants towards that. But we've been unsuccessful to this stage. We can also partner with the private sector in some way, but. I would imagine that. One of the things that in this, one of the tools in this of how this fiscal toolbox to advance. Building housing in this probably is our debt asset. So that might be one of the other things that would be a priority that isn't really reflected in that five year capital forecast because there wasn't a proposed. Borrowing for some billing in twenty twenty five. I think this council wants to have those discussions about a strategy there. And so that's, that, that I would suggest, you know, might not come to the fore. Anywhere else, the R D here does talk about some specifics that we can already see. Capital plan provides a sense of future capital needs, as does even this presentation on the future required scope. And we're already identifying that there's another, you know, seven million dollars plus in items that will need to show in the future budgets. So worship, I, you know, I don't know that administration would be able to identify any other particular things. Than what exists in our capital today, even the ones that are referenced in the report. Outside of that housing issue, which isn't sort of reflected in your experience.
Thank you for that, Mr. Gooden. I wasn't lucky to create additional work, but just that reference even. What you've just offered in response today is probably sufficient. I just want to order council that I will be considering this in the context of. Opportunity cost and where else we have money to spend. Again, it's, it's a strategic priorities issue. We have obviously a limited amount of funds available and a debt limit. So we have to spend our money where it's most needed. So just a consideration, but I think your response today and the fact that. We have this return and some of that could be referenced for, for next week in particular, the capital plan. It's probably sufficient. Thank you for that.
Counselor Demoto?
Well, I just want to thank the, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'd like to thank the mayor for expanding on that because I think that's an important component of, you know, opportunity. And I don't know whether it's the will of council to direct administration in regard to, just because we're talking about this. You know, recently we found out that the Luther Church. You know, recently we found out that the Luther Church. Will no longer be be used as a church at the end of the year. And because it's so institutional, I'm wondering if there just could be an inquiry. From the municipality to maybe make use of that space, whether it's for, you know, dorms or or for housing. Because we're on institutional land, there would there would be less work, I think, for Parks Canada and into maybe, you know, discussing the transfer. If there is an opportunity for the municipality to be involved in whatever type of bidding process is going to be involved with the church. You know, I I think because there's an opportunity there, I I think we would lose out there, I I even miss if we didn't give it a chance to at least ask the question. Could we have an opportunity at some scale, regardless of it's the things that I just discussed, or other opportunities that might help the municipality? You know, in that regard. Any ideas or? I just, it's, we're here, we're spinballing, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller MP. I think there you're referring to our debt limits and and so on, and in. Page seventeen, I think that took us to the end of twenty twenty-one. Where we have a certain amount of room available. Do we, this is not for next week there, but do we have a sense of how quickly our debt limit is being paid back, in other words? The this building was minus. Is out of ten-year, fifteen-year? Because eventually, you know, we're getting close to our our limits and and hopefully. These type of buildings, which are now ten years older approximately, will start to fall off the debt limit. Maybe something that three months down the road, we have a chance to look at for for future budget considerations, future years.
Go ahead, Mr. Reed.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Keller MP, yeah, certainly administration, one thing that is not included is any information on on. Our upcoming debt retirements in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, so that's something administration can can bring back some additional information for council. At the tax meeting, we just do a little scan, so if we have any mortgages that we're gonna have paid off, and we'll have to account for those payments in most of our years. We didn't ask that question, but the thing is, you know, as I reflected with the council budget discussion, municipality's debt capacity has rose, our revenue has rose, so. Council member with the special load, when there was the response to COVID, the reduction in the municipality's tax requisition. That also reduced our debt capacity, council's approved increase in that tax requisition, our revenue, and that increased our debt capacity, so. We've attempted to make that forward-looking, yeah, certainly with estimates, but it will be for twenty twenty-two, that we announced, I think, by the comments after our financial statements. But we can bring forward information about looking in a bit more detail at our current obligations, any that are set to expire, and just provide a little bit of.
Any other questions? Well, we'll move on to seven point two garage suite.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Keller MP, here for committee's consideration is a set of. Proposed interim garage suite policies from Parks Canada. In January this year, council received information from Parks with respect to their proposed standards for garage suites. And Parks was requested with municipality twice feedback, that time, committee directed administration. To return with some options to discuss issues related to emergency access, user access, product disposal rates, parking enforcement. And since that time, administration has met a number of times with Parks Canada, along with members of the administration from operations utilities and. A tech services branch. And provided input into Parks Canada, and they have developed the attached. Proposed interim policy for second floor suites, for your consideration. Administration also liberty of identifying a map to represent spatially where this garage suite policy would apply. And so essentially what it is a town could have garage sheets as a policy that's proposed. You will see some of the highlights in that proposed policy, obviously a recognition that all garage suites need to still conform to all building code requirements. But the garage suite should only be. Made available for periods of greater than thirty days, so I'm gonna look at the council's direction, it should not be made available for nightly accommodations. The permitted districts that are shown on the attachment map are the RH one, the RH two, and the RH two-H districts. There's some specification of what a garage is. I know one too that was identified as around parking. The requirements here are actually, I think, quite. Thoughtful in that they do not require an increase in the number of stalls, subject to the fact that each dwelling unit, so the primary house in the garage suite. Need to have a beast dedicated stall. And with respect to the emergency access, the. Proposed policy identifies that primary access to the garage suite should be from the front rather than from the rear lane. And that there should be an unencumbered, that can be a different word, but essentially direct access from the front to the garage suite. And that came as a result of discussion with our our servants and chief county, recognizing that some car vehicles to get down rear lanes, that would be a significant challenge. And the vast majority of times today, we fight a fire from the front lane, from on the street, and that our hoses only reach so far. So there's a bit of a discussion about the total length of the depth of the wad is, how far the hoses on the trucks will reach. And so that's why that recognition is reflected in the regulations for the post here. So Parks has developed this largely reflective of that ongoing discussion with administration. Council's direction and the they are seeking a sort of a. Additional or final opinion from council, if council has supported these. Street regulations proposed, if council wished to provide an additional direction to administration, provide additional feedback. If we do so, our recommendation is that that committee recommend council endorse the interim garage suite policy that's attached. There's an alternative that's a new direction by administration by additional, but Parks Canada prefer the refinement of that policy.
Questions for Mr. Governor? Austin Wilson.
A couple of questions, but my first question has to do with the parking department, and just for total clarification. It suggests that no additional stalls are required, yet then goes on to say that there has to be, there has to be dedicated. Parking stall for that garage suite or any accessory dwelling units. So primary dwelling unit is required to have a certain amount of parking stall based on. Gross floor area. Would one of those parking stalls, so if you the house or primary dwelling unit was required to have four. Would you be able to then say, well, one of those stalls would be for the garage, one would be for the suite, and then one would say you had an accessory dwelling unit in the basement. One would be for the accessory dwelling in the basement, and then the other two would be for the primary residence, meaning. Clearly that there would be no more stalls needed, it wouldn't be the primary resident requirement plus. And because I got into the accessory dwelling unit, policy did not require any additional stalls either.
So my understanding, and again, I recognize that, you know, our parks, so we want best ones to interrupt this, but in discussion with administration, my understanding is that that's. The way you reflected is accurate, the intention here is not to require the garage suite to add new stalls. If the existing site already had more than one stall per dwelling, so there's an existing house that had three stalls. And then you added a garage suite, you now have two dwelling units. And you have three stalls, so you would. So the intent here is that there is a dedicated parking stall for each dwelling unit. If a property had an existing second suite, it would already have to have dedicated stalls for that existing second suite. And for the primary residents, if they're not in a garage suite, they might also have to have that. For the for the garage suite, so one per dwelling unit, a minimum of one per dwelling.
If I could just continue that a little bit. I I find that particular section, they come to a fight to be. Quite confusing. So as as I read it. You have required parking for primary residents and. Second dwelling unit, if you have. And you don't need anything more for the garage suite. See of that says no additional onsite parking shall be required for a garage suite, as long as the site has a minimum of one required onsite parking stall. For each dwelling unit plus any accessory dwelling unit. So if you you don't have an accessory dwelling unit, and you have one parking stall, and you have no garage suite. You need no additional parking. No, you you worship the. You, if you have one home, a single stall, you currently, you would then. You would have one dwelling unit, one parking stall. In adding a garage suite, you'd be adding a new dwelling unit. You would have to add a new parking stall, for a total of two parking stalls, because you have two dwellings. I I won't debate with you, but for Parks Canada, I would say that. Their wording says something entirely different, they they expressly go to some length to differentiate between accessory dwelling units, which are in existing units. And garage suites, and it says under eight point zero five C. That no additional onsite parking stalls are required. And yet, above that, it says, if you have lane access, the parking must be accessible from the lane. Which I think then maybe makes. A requirement for no additional onsite parking, in fact, a requirement to shift your parking to to the lane. And it gets more confusing on this subject. Because they're they're indicating that parking must be accessible from the lane. There can be an outdoor staircase, but it can't be accessible from the lane. And so if somebody comes home with a small child and an armload of groceries, they have to park in the lane, but they can't access their suite from the lane, they have to go around the front. And apparently that's because that's more accessible for emergency crews, I get that, but it's. It's twenty percent of challenge for occupancy, I don't know whether they couldn't consider that you could have two entrances, one from the front and one from the back. Particularly if they're going to require parking. From the lane if there isn't, but I I have to confess, and this is not for you to defend, but I find that section. To be really quite difficult to interpret.
Sorry, just thinking what what the mayor is to sort of do it. Well, I guess just to fun, to merit would be that. When back, I I don't think that there's any. Primary residents in any of these zoned areas that would only require, only be required to have one stall. So I think almost, I would, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but gross floor area. Equation, you know, you'll come up with it. A total of how many stalls you need, so if you, you know, primary residents were required to have two stalls. Then. One stall would be, you know, the garage suite, one stall would be the. I I understand, I agree with you, there may be some fine tuning in the in the parking. Section. Further parking, right now, where it could depend on one through another. Go ahead, okay, well, I guess it does have somewhat, it's tied to somewhat to parking. But it is section eight point zero eight, and that's the garage suite side setbacks. So they're suggesting that a garage suite. Is required to be one point eight meters away from the side setback, which is. In line with what is required a housing. Yeah, a garage is only required to be point nine meters away from that side setback. It then goes on to speak to existing garages that may be. Repurposed to have garage suites on top of them, and and so an existing garage would be at point nine meters away from the property line. And the only additional items that they would have to meet would be any. Safety code items. So in my mind, I I think to. Give the most. Sorry, to give it the, to give them the most space. Still allotted to parking, I would suggest that. Setback requirement be point nine meters. And so even with new garage suites, why would they not be point nine meters? I think code is, sorry, I know code is requirement is one point two meters away from the property line, if you're not using any fire-rated materials. Yet, the point nine meter requirement. Could be. Used and and an applicant could then use fire-rated materials and and then be closer to that property line. My idea there is that if you're at one point eight meters away from the property line, there's about nine. There's about point nine meters that that's really wasted space between the property line and your garage. Whereas if your garage suite, a garage and garage suite were at that point nine meter setback. The opposite side could then. Be allocated to more parking, so instead of hiding that point nine meters on. Against property life, because it really can't be used in that area. Suggesting that it be point nine, as it is already for garages, and then. The outcome of that would stop the weeks all safety codes. But we'll take the quotes. So I guess. In short, I'd like to request that we change that from one point eight meters to point nine meters for for the size of that.
Deputy Mayor Keller MP, I think what would be helpful is if. Committee passed a motion to direct administration to advise specifically back to Parks, they're they're looking at a dialogue, you know, about, you know, closing this to council for discussion. And I think confiding comments, I heard, so the two things that I've heard so far is that our comment or recommendation. Would be that Parks should improve the clarity around section eight point five for parking, to ensure there's no clarities or any consequences, the mayor should reference it. If this, then that, so just sort of checking that, I hear council Wilson referencing. As I was seeing at point nine meter setback. And council Wilson, I'm just trying to show that I. Bringing something you didn't need to include, is the point nine meter, would that, would there be an expectation that that would be with the use of fire-rated materials? The part of the building photo, would it just be point nine meter?
You wouldn't even have to say with the use of fire-rated materials, it would just be in accordance with a safety code. And safety quotes.
So Deputy Mayor Keller MP, rather than me repeating, that's what I think I've heard, so my suggestion would be that committee should make motions to direct administration. To provide the following inputs, to Park Standard and the elements of their garage suite policy, A. Further improvement on the section eight point five with respect to parking. And the that specific change of point nine meter set, side or setback. So I think having that enumerated in the motion is helpful. As we saw earlier today, administration wants to be specific as possible and help us identify certain enumerated specific points. So we're all in this.
Council Wilson, will some of you willing to make that recommendation?
I am, is there, but do other councils have any other items on regarding that?
No. I do. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, or thank you, Council. Wilson, two other items I would add to the list. This is relatively minor, I suppose, but under section seven point zero three occupancy. I fully understand that the intent is to have garage suites occupied by eligible residents. But I think that should be sufficient for final sentence. Garage suites may not be rented or made available for periods of less than 30 days. Would I think unintentionally preclude the auction starting big month tense? So if somebody comes looking for a job and there's an available suite, but they can't start on the 15th of the month because it's got to be a 30 day period. I mean, it is, it's not going to happen often, but I don't see a real benefit for saying less than 30 days. If the only occupant can be an eligible resident in any of them. I understand that the intent is to prevent these from private home accommodation and tourist accommodation, but I don't see the benefit of that. And I would simply ask the question. And the other question that I would ask with Parks is why these particular sections town are included? So we have a map that goes with it. And in particular, all of Cabin Creek is excluded. Appreciate that there aren't any lanes in Cabin Creek, but there aren't any lanes in a couple of other places that are included. And the detail of the interim policy in that recognizes that it's a place that won't be linked. So I just want to know why a segment of the community that has been by intention of screaming. And you know, may, may simply be looking for our sufficient existing density issues there. Some sort of explanation I think is warranted because it is noticeable by its absence.
Mr. Given?
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Keller. I think just on the first, the smaller one. Council did provide that specific motion endorsing the garage suite concept, subject to only being used. And so I think there's probably an attempt that there is, there's probably an attempt by parks to be specific about that. And so we don't think it's necessary. Same time, we could also be writing for the 21st of August, the 21st of September, which is those things. So I think his worship is relative to small issue, probably we can do that way. I'm looking to see that Parks staff did present a some justification. There were some specific reasons that they identified. I would like to be able to share this with you. Sorry. Deputy Mayor Keller, if you don't have it in hand right now, and I would like, I, there was, my recollection, there was not Cabin Creek where there are a significant number of properties that already have attached garages. So I don't believe that there are any unattached garages in Cabin Creek, but if they're all attached garages. And even if I'm mistaken on that point, the other part was that there is already the right to convert an existing garage into a suite. So there, there are some, there are some issues there that they would have been a duplication of adding another garage suite to a person's existing rental garage suite. And I, I can find that information. I can circulate it to council by additional. But there was a reasonable and reasonable discussion of that. So we looked at the map to start off with, and to clear, this is administration's map provided for council convenience. We have to ask just those sort of questions. We're actually much larger and we said, well, is it actually all of these? What about the, what about the area of the compact lot district? And so we have gone through. I can summarize some of those by email to council. I just need to be able to pull them out by email and send them out.
Mr. Given?
The other thing I think for, for council, just in terms of your level of competence, Parks administration are supposed to, this is the interim policy that is intended to be, to have the ability to be revised based on outcomes. And so if there's any expected outcomes or any items that that show up that they wanted to adjust, Parks is open to doing that. So this isn't intended to be instead of then forget it. There's explicitly a, let's start with this and adjust as necessary, which is, I think, is the same approach that they use with their other policy on being used as such.
Mr. Given?
Just before I, I prepared to make a motion to give some direction, but before I get to that, just on that last point about changes and this being a work in progress. I wonder whether administration has anything they can share with us with respect to article nine of the proposed interim policy, which allows essentially a right to appeal. But rather than to the planning, development advisory committee, it's going to appeal to the superintendent. Just wonder whether that has been the subject of any discussion. Why it would be that when there is a body in town that is constituted specifically for development variance applications.
Deputy Mayor Keller, my understanding and initial read of it would be that the superintendent ultimately still retains that right. And they have delegated some of that authority and process to the PDAC committee. But ultimately, it still rests with the superintendent. And so my interpretation would be that article nine maintains that the link in article nine actually takes you to their standard development variance application form, which references PDAC. So I think it's sort of as being, you know, sort of precise and who the authority lies with superintendent. And if you follow the commission of a variance application, then you go to PDAC as a, as part of the process. Because the superintendent has delegated some of that authority to PDAC. So I don't think, I, I don't think this is a demonstration of change in process. I think it's a continuation of the same process, just as referencing it for the higher level, not showing that delegation.
Mr. Given? Council Wilson?
I'm relieved, Deputy Mayor, that you make a motion physically, call it together a little bit better. But one other question that I think is never, an item that's missing and maybe it's not required, maybe my, my building code may cover it, but there's no mention to setback from the primary residents. So how close would the garage suite and garage suite several E to the primary residents? And I speak with the building inspector on that item earlier today. She suggested that, that that requirement is within of her building code. But if he absent from this, I'm just not sure if that should or shouldn't be included in this policy.
I don't know that I would have a pen and swab right now. Council, I would have to check back. Deputy Mayor Keller can say, the head was able to search my inbox and can provide a little bit more information about why the Cabin Creek area, the compact lot district works to. So, so this is based on a realization that the land use policy only allows attached garages in Cabin Creek in the compact lot districts. So those districts were removed. Attached garages, which would be allowed in the compact lot district and the Cabin Creek district. Attached garages are already allowed to develop a living space that both the garage is part of their hall. Therefore, if they wanted to develop that space into a suite, that already would be covered under the secondary suite policy. So Cabin Creek and the compact lot district are allowed to have something that looks like this, except it would be attached to the house and it would be controlled under the secondary suite policy, not the garage suite policy. So the right for those areas to do something like this is maintained, it just shows up somewhere else.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Given? Mr. Hall?
With that also working to the trailer court, because there are some homes in there with attached garages?
The trailer court is the compact lot district. Parks is, I'm not sure how long, but it's been called compact lot district for some time. And just to change your terminology, recognizing that many of the properties in there are redeveloping over time and no longer go home to trailers. They're sort of on fixed foundations. So lots of compact.
Mr. Given?
I'd like to take a stab at a motion then, thank you. My motion will be that committee direct administration to require of Parks Canada with respect to article seven point zero three of the proposed interim policy on garage suites with respect to parking requirements under article eight point zero five. And with respect to setbacks under article eight point zero eight with a suggestion that the setback requirement be point nine meters. Yeah, that is all. If that is clear enough, Mr. Given provides sufficient clarity for the direction of the back parts and to fast and then return to us at some point. With responses, is that fair?
Yeah, except I think under eight point zero eight, the setback required for the, for the main residence is not in here.
Oh, right.
So Council Wilson, remember to ask about that.
I'm not too concerned about it. So then it's just up to the code.
Mr. Given?
Deputy Mayor Keller, I actually, I just want to, there is one aspect to that. I'd like to verify it. Mayor Ireland's motion is to inquire with Parks Canada, which doesn't require returning back to, to committee council. I think Parks is waiting to hear if council says, if those issues are able to be addressed, you know, we're able to provide a feedback. I said to that feedback and was ready to roll this out. Is there a need to come back to committee? So I just want to make sure that I understand that. Parks would recently asked, so is this ready to bolt the door or not? That I think who is probably has an interest in advancing a silicon surgery. So is the expectation that administration provide that feedback and Parks, that's like feedback, the council is in support. Maybe come on, or do you want us to come back and approach, definitely decide with the reports?
Mr. Given?
I'm happy to, to speak to that. Whether or without changes, I am generally supportive, but I am not keen to say that I endorse the policies because that has a different meaning to me. So I might be prepared to say, even at this juncture, without those changes addressed, that I will accept the proposed interim garage suite policy in principle, which is perhaps different than an endorsement, different to me in many. But I, there are some things in here that I don't endorse and I don't want to make issue of them. It's not our jurisdiction and I understand that Parks wants to proceed in that fashion. Generally speaking, this provides an opportunity for me to house in the community. I am supportive. There are some small details that are some concern that they can be worked out. But I will say that I have difficulty with article of section four point zero two in particular. I'm not prepared to endorse that statement there. I don't believe to be true. But in principle, the idea of adding housing options to the community is supportive.
So it probably doesn't mean to come back to the whole, but it come back for approval in principle of council meeting, what changes we need?
If I might, there was a motion, there is a motion on the table to direct administration. If we could dispose of that, I would have to make another motion to get this to council. If that's acceptable.
Sorry after that?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
All in favor of the motion to send the our comments back to Parks for the required changes? All in favor? That is carried. Mr. Given?
And then prepare to make a motion that committee recommended council accept in principle the interim garage suite policy as presented.
All in favor? Sorry. Minute is in bloom. Mayor Ireland?
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Keller, I think this matter is on the agenda because it is time sensitive. We have been eager participants in community, communities in bloom over the years. It's had a bit of a hiatus for the last couple of years, of course. I received this email indicating that if we wish to register for this year, that registration has to be in by the end of this month. I believe that councillor Waxer is the councillor assigned to communities in bloom and assigned in anticipation that we would continue our involvement. So I bring this forward with either two motions or a two-part motion. Firstly, that committee direct administration to register the municipality task or participate in communities in bloom twenty twenty two. And that committee recommend council proclaim twenty twenty two as the year of the garden in Jasper.
Any debate? I have a motion. All in favor? That is carried. Administration has everything they need. Paid parking, residence exemption. Mr. Given?
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Keller. Actually, Mr. Don is going to end this one. Sorry, this is being directed on. This is going to end this one. I know that the team has been working on enacting the item for resident exemptions. As contained in the motion action process, so it's not pre-updated by the session of work that we've done with everybody.
Mr. Don?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller. As Mr. Given mentioned, this was an item on the motion action list to let council know what is happening with the resident exemption program for paid parking. And as the information will be released, as we launch to the public soon here, and our program does meet council's direction, we didn't feel the need to bring back a formal report. But essentially, we've been working with the software provider, Hotspot is our contractor for this year, again, same as last year. And they do have to make some modifications to the software. And, uh, they do have to make some modifications to the software in order to enable the program that council directed administration can implement, which is the five hundred hours for all residential accounts. And, um, so essentially residents will have to register with Hotspot either through the app or on the website and same process as last year, essentially. So you have to, um, demonstrate that you are Jasper resident, the requirements will be the same as last year and then input your license plate, which then enables our bylaw staff when they're on the streets and scanning the plates to know that this is a resident vehicle. And then, uh, the program we're working on will be working with a code essentially. So at the time of launch, we probably won't have it in place, but it will be, uh, finalized and developed and implemented with, uh, Hotspot by the end of May. And essentially, um, it's a promo code that will be unique to each resident. And then as you get on the street and you scan the sign to start your parking session, you'll input the amount of time you're parking for and then input the promo code and then you get your free parking that way. And we will be tracking on the backend what that looks like and how many hours people are using. And so that's in a nutshell, the basic, uh, resident exemption program. Part of council's direction was also to develop a program for, uh, residents with mobility challenges or technology challenges. And we are planning to do the same as we did last year with the seniors permit. So essentially you would apply for a resident account, upload your vehicle with your license plate, and then it is permit based. So anyone with mobility or technology challenges would essentially make a declaration that they, they have such a challenge. And then it would enable them to park in the paid parking zone and not have to check in and out every time. So it's a process that is upfront. And then once it's in the system, there's no action required for those individuals throughout the program, which will last till the end of October. Another sort of twist that we have in the program this year is that we're expanding onto Geeky Street, which means there's more residents that will be in the paid parking zone. So we are also working on a program that is specific for those residents. So that was existing last year. You can think of, uh, apartments upstairs on Patricia Street, for example. But now that we're expanding onto Geeky and more residential areas, we'll also have a program for those residents to be able to sign in and not have to, uh, tap in and tap out when they park by their residence, essentially. Um, we are, we've been working on paid parking extensively for the last month, I want to say, and it's a, a multi-department effort. So it involves operations, it involves bylaw, it involves finance, it involves communications. And, uh, signage, of course, is the biggest, uh, part of the program and making sure that that's all laid out and there, that there is sufficient signage and that it's all in, in all the right places. And when we get the signage here in Jasper, we'll determine the program launch date. So I'm not able to provide an estimate at this time, but I expect we'll be able to do that in the next week or so. And for residents, um, we will be communicating extensively about signing up for the resident program, of course. But also, um, we'll provide an estimation of when the signage is planned to go up. And so we won't have a fixed starting date for the program. And as the signage goes up, then that's the, the cue word, the indication for people that are parking that, yes, you need to pay or you need to tap in, tap out, um, to manage your paid parking.
Thanks, Mr. Don, and thanks to Mr. Given and all the staff, all the work that's gone into this. I have a question for you. So, so if family or residence, they have five or six vehicles, would you just divide them up between the residents?
Each, my recommendation would be that each individual registers their own vehicle. So I think the intent is five hundred hours per vehicle, not per family necessarily.
Okay, so, okay, so we say a residence that has five vehicles and three of them are registered for people.
Yeah, so you can have multiple vehicles, uh, registered on their one person. And then when you park, it would ask you which vehicle you're using. So depending what you're driving that day, you would have to indicate that in the app, but that's a good question. I'll, I'll make note of that. If they're all registered to the same individual, then that might be just a one set of five hundred hours, right? I was imagining five people with five vehicles, but that's not.
Or two people that have five vehicles and three are registered to them and two others are registered to one. I'm just curious.
I, I can definitely confirm that Hotspot has the ability to hold multiple license plates on one account. So, so using me as an example, if I have two different vehicles, when I'm downtown parking, I have to select which license plate I want to activate at this time. And that's what would turn up as paid essentially on the enforcement side.
Okay, thank you. Councilor tomorrow?
Oh, thank you. I was just gonna say, so if you have two vehicles, that doesn't constitute, because I thought it went by license plates. That doesn't give you ten, around a thousand credit.
Mr. Don?
Perhaps one more feel-good item about the decision that we've made is that, um, everyone who signed up for a senior pass last year will be automatically renewed in the system this year. So we anticipate that's a lot of people that might have mobility or technology challenges and therefore we want to make that as easy as possible for them. So we'll, we'll just roll over those permits and it won't be required to sign up again.
That's awesome. Thank you. Oh, correspondence. Well, Mayor Ireland, sorry.
Just before we leave, I, I just wanted to extend my appreciation to staff for, for this. I, I appreciate that council challenged you with a really difficult task to sort of resident exemptions in paid parking and tremendous amount of work is going to do. I appreciate the fact that there are still questions coming up, um, and now about whether it applies to a resident, to one vehicle, a two-vehicle. And, um, again, I think it, it points to the necessity for council to be as expressive, clear as it can be when making motions and resolutions. But I do appreciate, um, it's been a busy time of lots of other issues, um, paid parking being only a margin, but I just wanted to extend my thanks to all the staff that's worked on this. Thank you.
Senator tomorrow?
Yes, um, I just wanted to throw this out there if it's the will of council. I looked at the calendar here and, um, I looked at how many regular meetings we have before the end of June. And the reason, um, I'm bringing this up is because of the, the thought of a loser church and, uh, the, the horse isn't dead yet, so I'm not going to discount. I was just reading a, a, a quick article here that was, uh, written locally, that any organizations that are interested in taking over the property should submit an expression of interest as soon as possible. The deadline for proposals is June thirtieth. A decision will be made by the end of August by the church's congregation slash board with the transfer of property to take place before the end of twenty twenty-two. So if I may, uh, well, council add an extra agenda item here under, uh, new business at seven point six. To direct administration to explore what opportunities might be available to the municipal penalty, should it be successful? Should it be the successful applicant for the transfer of property of a loser church and return to committee by the twenty-fourth? That's just a, an idea, just because we don't have a lot of time and I just thought, again, because it's an institutional, it might be, and, and we might have an opportunity for something.
So it's seven point five, is it the will of council? Also, hi.
I have a question. So you, you want admin to figure what they would do if we applied, if we were successful?
I, yeah. Was that clear enough? You might not have any.
Counselor Wilson?
I don't mean to be, but making on this one, but I, I wouldn't support this. I think, uh, our administration has their hands full with other items, since the short timeline on it, uh, and yeah, I it might probably, but just for help, clarity, Mr. Given, would this be an arduous task to add to administration's plate as well?
Um, I would say that this is probably in fact our community development, both our community development and operations facilities in these areas. You know, we want to have an understanding of the quality of the building, the vision it's in, and to build people the functions that it could provide. Um, and, um, some part of that might be recreation or culture or some other use. And both those areas are pretty engaged in the activity center renovation project, um, weekly meetings, uh, the large group and then more like people meetings on, on smaller portions or more technical aspects. Um, and as you saw, we have a pretty large capital plan. I think if perhaps a way to approach this would be for council to have some discussion, if, if council could imagine some ideas that you wished administration to let ship. Um, and the reason I suggest that is because if administration comes up this way, I, I don't have any suggestion. I have my own ideas, but I have no idea if there are ideas. And, and so I could probably pose ten fifteen different ideas and maybe zero of them are actually in line with the council, like in fashion. So perhaps, um, not to miss the opportunity, maybe this would be an item to add, uh, to, you know, to the upcoming council meeting for council to discuss and decide and provide direction to administration. Uh, that would, that way all consumers have an object, maybe give some thought to it, um, or the following meeting. Um, and then have either of those two guys give correction to administration upon a specific idea or a range of ideas that you might like us to explore. Because right now we could spend limited administrative time chasing a bunch of ideas. It actually didn't suit what council was thinking. Cause I prefer to spend our administrative time working on ideas of council, this sort of thing, you know, at the school point, right? Seven cents.
Yes, that's good. And you know what? I appreciate everyone's time. So I will, uh, I will submit that request by, uh, tomorrow at three o'clock as, as paranormal standard. I appreciate that guidance. And, um, no, I just, for me, coming fresh off of our, our strat plating and, and seeing some of that development in that for housing, that could be an opportunity, whether we continue, like if we were successful and that property, not the building itself was available, we could have, uh, an ideal area for some community houses in, in some type of aspect. So, um, you know, we were talking about a combination for, uh, you know, uh, special interest groups or whatever it is, it might not even be the thing. So this could be something else and I think it's an ideal spot to, to explore.
Great. So you'll submit to the proper channels and I'll come back either on the next agenda or make contact?
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Anything else, something that exists from one? Okay, correspondence, leasing invoice.
Senator Mayor Keller MP, this is your for council information, um, and flag something that cast attention first, as council will aware, the municipalities now have to pay a portion of the leasing costs. As a lot of references, the government of Alberta, um, is looking to collect a, uh, a fifteen percent cost recovery on their provincial leasing costs uh, from municipalities that total of just over thirty-three million dollars. Uh, and we received our invoice. The invoice is attached. And the thing that I wanted to bring to council attention is not so much the principle of the issue which has been has been decided and has been a matter of discussion council table past, but specifically how it's being applied. The, uh, attachment that shows the cost breakdown for the municipality of Jasper, um, shows how that cost is calculated. And there is a section at the bottom that says, uh, less modifiers. So basically, you know, Jasper's share of leasing cost is C uh, equals A plus B for the hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. Municipalities can receive a reduction off of that total if they need certain modifiers in special. So if, for example, you didn't have a detachment in your municipality, then you wouldn't have to pay that exact amount. You get a reduction, you would not have to pay. The greatest council attention that's from an administrative perspective would seem that if any municipality could make an argument for shadow population, it would be the municipality of Jasper. And so, uh, I brought this to council attention just for information, uh, for council's consideration of this potential added as the item. Um, and maybe in context of recognition of Jasper's status as a result of this power. Um, you know, there are other ways of recognition of Jasper's special status and, and can more, um, could be applied, um, you know? And this might be one of those examples of receiving a modifier for shadow population. So just raise it for council's attention and awareness. Uh, administration's suggesting in the action right now on this. Um, but if council wanted to be in the issue or if you get a chance to talk to the minister or as you're talking to your colleagues in the municipalities, uh, I can see this idea that there are these other smaller factors for recognition of Jasper's unique context could have a direct financial benefit.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Do you have any additional ideas? Also, Mayor?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, uh, Keller MP. I do appreciate you bringing that up, Mr. Given. It's actually the point I was gonna bring up myself, but, um, we have maybe two opportunities here. Our ongoing shadow population, but most recently over the last couple of years and maybe the next two years, the additional shadow population as a result of the amount of additional workers here working on the pipeline project. And, uh, it would be prudent for us to, to try to, um, get this reduction or a reduction, um, on our policing costs based on, on those two factors. And you were suggesting a, do lobbying opportunity, perhaps, Mr. Given? Um, as this is an invoice, that's already said, and there probably would be no opportunity for revision.
Councilor, no, I, I don't think an opportunity for revision for this current fiscal year. This budget before, we've been in those for, and of course we unlike other players in government, we usually, we pay rentals, um, in full. Uh, but for future years, this might be something, you know, if a quick calculation says that subsidy is up to five percent of your total share. So I mean, it's a, you know, ninety-seven hundred dollars. That might be the type of topic that council might work, that thousand dollars to send off a letter to the minister requesting that the shadow population modifier be applied to the municipality.
Senator tomorrow?
Yeah, I, I believe we're moving on to the, uh, period of four hours for this meeting. So I hope to move that, um, committee passes four hour, just maybe the time for.
All in favor? You give the best? Mayor Ireland?
I appreciate, um, the comments about shadow population and I acknowledge that Mr. Given just said that in the context of policing costs, it doesn't belong to a lot, but recognition that Jasper has its shadow population is extremely significant in the number of individuals. So it is something that is worth considering. Appreciate as well, Mr. Given, this is not your document. I'm happy to have it. I haven't seen these calculations before. I wonder whether you're able to comment about, um, the total municipal population of seven hundred and fifty-six thousand that's, that's referenced that, the topic? Does that suggest that less than a quarter of the population is actually of the province is now subject to these new policing policies? Is that what I can read into that? Something you would tip?
Yes, uh, to Senator Mayor Keller MP, that, that's correct worship. So that's seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, twenty nineteen population number is the portion of the Alberta population that is covered under the Alberta Commission for Service Services. Um, and of course that excludes the population that's within the service, they pay for direct services in Calgary and, uh, the likes of Uffrich, Spanish, also have their own services and, uh, other, uh, municipalities that have direct operational experience with R C P, like Grandford, Reddy, who have a contract with the R C P between the municipality and R C P. Who's like Jasper, who are under that five thousand population threshold of rural nature, who would be included in that second system?
Yes, I mean, I, I also note that they have an interesting calculation, which is equalized assessment per capita. But then they don't use it, at least as far as I can tell, they've calculated it and just left a hanging there. But that's an interesting number. And I, I wonder in just in terms of generalized benchmarking of our community, particularly, um, with respect to taxation, whether that number is generally available for other communities for a matter of comparison to see what equalized assessment per capita might be in, in any of other. Of course, you want, Mr. Powell, to just find it, an, an interesting number and more interesting because they have it and they don't use it.
So equalized assessment, uh, for every municipality is available on the regular provincial data portals and in the, uh, current records that are locally available. It is an interesting analysis because it really It is an interesting analysis because it really speaks to the amount of fiscal capacity that municipalities have for first. Um, there are some municipalities with very low populations that have very high levels of assessment and and therefore have very high financial capacity. Um, it is an interesting analysis.
Particularly as we forward other discussions with provincial politicians about how our municipal might be funded in the future. That might be a really relevant statistic to have at our disposal to compare with for that municipal reason.
Deputy Mayor, I suggest that either, you know, the the committee can receive this correspondence for information and reflect on issue and maybe comes up at some point. Uh, he may wish to uh receive this information and recommend the council write the appropriate minister asking the shadow population be applied to the mixed value Jasper. So you could use your receipt for information, take note of it, um, or receive for information and recommend the council write a letter to the minister, Sister Jena, on the topic.
Relation to that recommendation, Counselor Mona?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, Counselor. And yes, I would recommend that council receive the letter and and invoice or information and also recommend that we investigate the calculations with the individuals listed in the letter to see if the modifier could be applied for shadow population as it relates to Jasper.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns, all in favor? Very. The next letter, Mayor Ireland requested that this be put on the agenda and circulated for information. And she sent to the Minister of Finance on March 22nd. It's here for information, I believe, all in all. And then we have the financials for the Jasper library that are here, I've been forced to receive. And if there's any questions, you can direct them to Mrs. Mona email or to Council Hall. So I will need a motion to uh receive the library financial review for the events in December 31st, 2021. With the Council Hall, all in favor? Motion actionless, Mr. Given.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Keller MP. Um, we have addressed the number of written motion actionless, so you can see that administration is proposing um, some updates to dates, yes, block parking, we're proposing that with coming into June. We are facing a crunch time around paid parking. Um, the brand launch and seating in that area, so a realistic timeline, first come back would be in that June timeframe. Um, May for the Slum against name still, obviously, that would be a forward-looking. And administration is going to talk to Mr. Set, really understand his plan a little bit more about how tree planting projects and sliding may or may not coexist at the same still. Um, and the parcel GV development information, I did have an opportunity to meet with the developer of parcel GV. Uh, he related with in regular contact with parks and regularly advising the plans. Um, and he advised that they were at a stage where they believed they had found a plan that met the requirements that parks was looking for. They're going to make that submission, and he expected that he would be able to return that to council um, once that was in the department approved. Um, he was a bit hesitant to be sharing anything that didn't reflect the current state of development concept, uh, that really is a iterative process back and forth with parks. So, um, based on the discussion at the last meeting, not to not to bug him, I'm very happy to have that discussion. Um, and he was happy to share that, but wanted to ensure that it was reflective of what development would actually rather than someone who was certainly through the design process. In addition to those changes and dates, my recommendation would be that we could eliminate the garage seats feedback item. The uh, which was received and the restriction given on that. Um, the paid parking resident exemptions, um, which there's a verbal update by Director Nell and the activity center renovation item. Again, some of those will be replaced with newer items, but I think the items that were requested back in February of this year have been delivered and new work happens.
Can I have a motion to accept the motion actionless with changes? Thank you, Counselor Wilson, all in favor? Wow, council representation, I'm very pleased. That's your demand?
Unfortunately, due to an urgent opportunity for me, I'm going to miss community conversations tomorrow, which is 2 o'clock environmental responsibility. Council Hall has volunteered to help me up there as the alternate on the community conversations.
Counselor Doma, will you be attending community features with me on Thursday and Wednesday?
In person.
Perfect. Thank you.
Well, just another curve call has come my way. And because we're enlightened to the fact that our first legislative committee meeting will be next Tuesday at 10:30, I believe. Um, I'm unable to attend that. However, uh, we don't have any really set up as far as terms of reference for process for that. So I'm not sure whether we're gonna have agenda items added and how what the process for that is. This is true.
We, I think, as administration have had some other discussions about providing a agenda at the end of the week, as we have other regular agendas. Um, I think the initial one would be to review the change of reference of theirs. And to establish what the overall plan of our list about equal life. So a pretty light agenda this morning, as as the community stress. But it would be published on Friday along with our regular council.
Anybody else?
Just to alert, um, council, Mr. Given and I, along with our counterparts in that and Kenmore, have a Zoom meeting with our MLA Martin Long and Ben Coughlin MLA Miranda Rosen on Friday of this week to discuss ongoing efforts with respect to stats within provincial name, leading hopefully to revenue tools. Yesterday, we received a letter from Minister Schweitzer, responsible for tourism and innovation. Um, in 1990, he referenced our our efforts we had attempted to engage him in the discussion. He has deferred to the Ministry of Private Municipal Affairs on basis that it's within his jurisdiction. So we will meet with our NLAs to plan a path forward and and that happens as you say.
When events currently, sorry?
One more addition, sorry, for Thursday, I, we, there's a Jasper community team society.
Upcoming events, 2020, we have the North of the Festival, I have said it's great, continues to May 8. National Volunteer Week, April 24th, 30th, I had the pleasure of doing the video yesterday. Emergency preparedness week, May 1 to 7. State of Municipality Best, Jasper Chamber of Commerce, May 11th, a ceremony meeting, afternoon, evening meeting. So, evening. Evening. Snake So, uh, reforestation project, it's off by 12, intergovernmental meeting, Tuesday, May 17th, 9:30, host by cross Canada. Anything else that's coming up? Counselor Mona?
Thank you. And I wonder if administration can confirm that we have a community fire smart cleanup day on May 14th, is that on our calendar or did I put something in that?
Mr. Don?
You are correct, Counselor Mona, thank you.
Do we have a net match in May?
18.
18? Now we have two matters, deliberate matter, intergovernmental relations, and upcoming launch of the new municipal Jasper brand. Both in camera, and I don't believe there'll be any business since we came out in the practice.
That's correct, Deputy Mayor Keller MP, you decided to serve council direction or decision, and so.
So may I have a motion to move in camera at 2:45? Counselor Mona, all in favor? Let's carry it. Thank you, everybody, and thank you, everybody, for joining us today.